This meeting is being recorded.
Perfect.
Hey there. Good evening, everyone.
Good morning.
This is very good.
And we're going to have to bring it from the Russell.
No, I'm going to make sure if I got this so early, I was like, oh. Yeah.
Language just right.
For all homework volunteers.
So.
If we not have that idea.
Better.
Oh, like, actually, it's better. Or we can sign. Which is still in.
You think. How you doing?
Yeah, for you to leave about.
Thank you. I'm really excited. Yeah, you'd be great to that.
I'm really excited. I'm there. Hopefully, just. Transitioning away from. China and Detroit, something more in the campaign with like GTM because there's some more types on.
Yeah.
So I can, I can help more with that. But it will be interesting to see what you can. So just, yeah, one of those things.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I've got enough to pick up.
You know what I mean?
Oh, I should just get my.
Hi there.
Hi.
Is this your very first in Pennsylvania?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm here with a council.
In the world.
Not in the white world.
I'm only two years old.
Thank you. Are you getting a chair?
So that I.
I don't know.
Just land low.
Yeah.
So how's maybe it's.
Good.
Did that happen fast or what?
Yeah. How you doing?
Why are we returning our packets to the reporter?
Just carry it.
Um, did you make any notes on any of them while we were doing it? It didn't become public record if notes get based on them.
Is this certificate the actual one?
No, that's just.
Oh, okay.
If you are going to, ordinarily, if I put notes in the notebook, I would leave those with the C word for recorder.
Probably should. Where we can photograph them and send them in, right?
Well, no, I think it's, I think, sorry, no. I think my understanding is that, you know, we have to keep track of them again and turn them over.
If they're.
There's public record requests and their relevant.
True. I have a question. Would you rather the city be your representative or rather you be your representative?
Yeah. Um, but I have heard of this before. It's not like, never heard of it, to be exact.
It's the first in, in my 20 years that I've been asked to return. I've got no objection, just saying, that's the only reason I asked us, because I didn't, I've never seen it before. But it makes sense.
But if you are, you know, you come.
Yes, you know, I was laughing a minute ago. Right, one minute. If that clock is right, we're so used to the one on my computer being nine minutes off. I'm ready to start at 5:40. Ready to move, Sarah? All right, it's 6:45. I'm going to call the town, the city council, we have a meeting December 25th. Roll call, please.
Councilman.
Here.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor. Councilor.
Here.
Councilor.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Mayor.
Thank you. And we're on Zoom tonight, is that right? Everything, is this with our new equipment?
It's not well, not an equipment, but a new attempt at different equipment.
Okay, well, um, only for you for, for giving, uh, we'll, we'll just keep at it until, until, until that one, that's great spirit. Thank you for your efforts. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item 2.1, um, and is the opportunity, it's meeting accessibility, Lucero.
We do have a question for the COVID. The way we are trying to go, maybe this will translate into Spanish. We ask you to do this for each of the. For any of your comments.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Here's my point out that some teachings were made this morning. They are referring the agenda already, but just to point out two folks, you just add two additional items tonight.
Great, so those teachings wouldn't necessarily be on the online copy.
They are on the online copy.
Oh, they are, uh, on the same website copy. Great, okay. Thank you. Uh, item number four is swearing in of the new councillors and city attorney.
Right, I would love to pass this over to Hector and Lucero to lead us.
Welcome, everybody. Part of the in one little hill. The next item on the agenda is where the head of the four new councillors, or four councillors of mayor can do their new terms of office. And in addition, this is a moment that's in your time. So welcome the four councillors and mayor areas blood to the podium. While you're, where you'll declare your oaths and then Lucero will text to that, you'll sign it. You'll have a copy.
Okay.
Will this be a repeat after me thing or?
We have a copy of the oath for you.
Okay. It'll be a real loud thing.
In the big pot?
It is.
I'll just like that.
Great, thank you. We're going to make it a little safe as well, too, but. So we're going to start with our seat one of the. So I just start. I, Colette, Harry Miller, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the city charter and ordinances of the City of Towne, and I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties in the position of city council, position one, to which I have been elected to the best of my ability. Councillor. I, Nicole Ryder, do solemnly swear that I would support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the city charter and ordinances of the City of Towne, and will faithfully and honorably perform the duties in the position of city council, position four, to which I have been elected to the best of my ability. The next one we have, Congress. Thank you. I, Elmer Nomar, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the city charter and ordinances of the City of Towne, and will faithfully and honorably perform the duties in the position of city council, position five, to which I have been elected to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Captain Nomar. Thank you, Lucero. I, Normie Erslund, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the city charter and ordinances of the City of Towne, and will faithfully and honorably perform the duties in the position of mayor to which I have been elected to the best of my ability.
I, Dave Holman, do solemnly swear, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the city charter and ordinances of the City of Towne, and will faithfully and honorably perform the duties to the office of the city attorney.
Thank you, Julie, the councillors, and the city attorney. Uh, we do have one more, uh, our council members who will need certified materials to make it back to an in-person meeting to be at the outside tonight. Welcome back, all important members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucero. Uh, item number five on the agenda is community announcements. Are there any community announcements? Uh, we'll start with staff.
Yeah, I'm sure that the city hall will be closed next Monday, um, and then Monday after the first day, it's part of our staff holiday.
Anybody else? Uh, council? All right. Next item on the agenda is speaker's heard on non-agenda item. Do you have any speaker request forms?
Oh, may I be interviewed any of the speakers today?
Do we have any online? Anybody raising their hand? Uh, Charlie, um, please come forward and state your name and city for the record and then, um, once you're finished, you can grab a speaker request form off of the table there and put it up to the record.
I'm Charlie Gross, uh, coming from City of Towne, and I just want to offer kudos to the Town Public Works Department. They got an unexpected short notice opportunity to install a park along Creekside Drive much earlier than had been scheduled, and they jumped on it, dropped everything else, did the site prep, and that installation is in progress now. What a great team.
Outstanding, thank you. So nice to hear. Um, and the pictures are, are fun, yes, great, uh, boost to the morale. Item number seven on the agenda is department reports. Staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, my staff report or my department report is in front of you all, you have your packet. Um, it just quickly summarizes, it's one of the major projects going on, staff updates, deck updates, et cetera. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can at this time.
Are there any questions in the staff report? Thank you. Item number eight. At 8.1 on the consent calendar is approval of the council minutes from December 7th. And we also have 8.2 support of the Metford Water Commission building resilient infrastructure and community to grant application for seismic retrofitting. Does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent calendar for discussion? All right, so entertain a motion. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Clark.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion varies. Item number nine on the agenda is 9.1, discussion of financial analysis for proposed urban renewal plan. Staff?
Wait, wait, Mayor. Wait, what, Mayor, I'm going to pull up the document for you, number six. The document is in front of you all as that separate procedure packet.
Have your own zoom, are you able to see the slides?
Beautiful, thank you. All right, tonight, councilors, we are presenting with you the preliminary financial analysis of the proposed urban renewal plan. As a quick reminder, for the urban renewal planning process, right now we are in the phase where we are drafting our initial plan. On my birthday, we go through drafting our initial plan, so it's been difficult through the process, roughly eight months ago. And we're hoping to feedback that we got through that process and submit it in people's. Uh, so we are now back at the stage of drafting. Uh, once we finish up our draft, we're going to be back next week, we will forward it to a 45-day public review period. Um, during that public review period, we'll have a chance to hear from the planning commission, from the various passing districts where impacted community members. We can then take their feedback and make any changes to the plan that we would like. Then the next step will be the council, if you'll plan it then and create it a comfortable way to refer that plan to the ballot. And voting for over the ballot measure, incremental passes, this means we then pass the ordinance to approve and adopt. So we are at the beginning of that cycle still, and you can see that we've already covered the purpose and the projects, and we're looking tonight on the government of financial analysis. Tonight's presentation is going to be the preliminary financial analysis. It's our feedback for all of you, over the next week, the consultant and I will finalize that analysis to come up with the official numbers that will be included in the draft. So I will embark on a very detailed. And last, can we all carry it through the house?
Great.
All right, so as a reminder, the goal of this return of the plan is to recover affordable housing, revitalize our commercial areas, upgrade city infrastructure, and increase our residency to and increase our resell quantity best. This is a plan designed to give exact response to the Almeida vibe to help town recover in those areas that we're still struggling to bounce back from. So really, when you talk about financial analysis, we're really asking ourselves what projects we want to get done and how much we're making. And what you have on the slide, and then a structure that's in the long run here, it's specific projects that may be to help us reach our goals, our missions. So for example, in our goal to recover the affordable housing of the blocks and pipe, we kind of have three main topics. Oh, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we can remove that, just because it's going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You know, we have projects designed to help the land become more available. Um, one of the biggest struggles of affordable housing is having available land and housing to build on. Hopefully, we'll use building costs on individual housing. Um, so before talking about, we have projects that we know that we have discussed that we'd like to achieve. The exact design will be able to develop and to get closer to implementing that. Just to be clear on all that. What's important on this one, I want to point out, is the bottom three projects, the home building program, the accessory dwelling unit program, and the home lifting program. Um, and the city's first draft, or say tourist first draft of this plan, um, a huge portion of the funding need was to help with individual home fundraising and bringing back many factor plans. Since that time, the state has introduced and adopted, um, a large-scale funding program that is designing their own programs to address those needs. So they look for cover of affordable housing, both projects are really focused on emphasizing those other areas to help support affordable housing development in town. Any suggestions on this, um, preliminary project list?
Yeah, so this, this represents when the first year? What is the total numbers and everything that we're looking at?
This is, this is the cost estimate to accomplish the project. So for example, that Rock Road Railroad crossing, um, our engineer has estimated that'll be 1.1 million dollars to make that every. Because that crossing is not entirely in the urban renewal area, it can only pay for a portion of that total crossing. So that's the portion that we can have the urban renewal pay. Um, and then, for example, Winter Sage, upgrading Winter Sage to Level Street Stand, this is a, the street that leads up to public works is only halfway wide, I'll call it. Not yet fully established street. Um, that total cost would be about 250,000, and that's half a connect cost for having part of that paid by developer.
Okay, so there's no time on the.
There's no time. This is all if we were to do the projects tomorrow, how much would that cost?
Okay, and I guess, I guess the bottom 2023, um, was maybe, maybe if you were going near right here.
Oh, right.
Okay.
No, that's just if we were to do all the projects tomorrow, what would that cost me?
Yeah, Councilor.
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering, specifically in this third individual housing category, I see that these programs are funded and administered by OHCS, however, I foresee a lot of questions being directed towards the City of Towne and the essential mature. Been wondering what would be happening on being allocated or if it's possible to move inappropriate mature towards communities and helping people navigate that process with as much transparency and understanding as possible for accessing them for the available resources.
Yes, absolutely. So that if the state is planning to support those programs, that type of goal would not be public like a variable.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm unclear, uh, if they're funded by OHCS, why are they on this list?
Because I wanted to point out, because those programs exist. And the reason why they want to include it in those public estimates is because that there are grants that are available.
Okay.
And this was largely, and I will have to log with you still later, at first press of council procedure, to understand what grant events are out there. In addition to the potential of public funding.
Good, good.
Yeah, it is going to be communications, a lot of the better confirming, following on the city staff. I'm wondering if we have any plans to support them for that added level of communication that would be needed from the state. Yeah, we're, OHCS, so we're going to get those programs off the ground, and conversations are ongoing. Do they have additional plans to support local jurisdictions that will support new programs? Um, I will say we're proud of this importance. Um, we will work to make the capacity available to staff and support folks getting their homes back, post fire. Thank you.
Also, I just want to remind councillors to, um, to make me recognize my name so I can get your name on the recordings.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
We can now move to the next slide, which is goal number two, revitalize with an unintentional study on commercial areas. Uh, so we're given two strategies for us, but one of the tools to encourage development, so that was encourage actual commercial buildings to be built in town, and also to support businesses. Um, these programs are based off of urban remodel programs in other jurisdictions that have shown to be successful. The first one is a fresh start grant, that's really just a building grant to help new buildings get developed. An other story grant is a grant to support the use of mixed-feast, um, building residential on the top floor, residential commercial space. SC deferral room just helps push out some of the larger project, cross, right, or me, project, cross the building. The slot grant from the river was when their job start on the B to help adapt businesses or new businesses, or sorry, commercial spaces for new businesses coming in. And so the total costs of some of these are based off of the same program levels that are providing those other jurisdictions as examples.
Any questions on this set of projects?
Councilor Fire. Again, this seems like a lot of communications and answering questions and processing of information for people. And I'm wondering if that also in the church, or if that all of the also in the streets. So if these will be church, oh, that's, these will be church programs, they can be supported by church staff.
Any other questions?
All right, next slide, allowing which slide I'll say. Um, it's a goal to upgrade city infrastructure. So what we're seeing in our build back, we have some neighborhoods are building back with higher density than what was there before. And they're building back at a speed of achieving that higher density faster than the city of this state. Um, so we are looking to use our renewal funds to support the infrastructure needed for that higher density housing, things like sidewalks for gutters, paved alleys, et cetera. Um, we are hoping for engineers to do an actual assessment and name these great projects in their past. But the estimate right now is around 2 million to be able to accomplish all of those projects. Rock Road, side one of the movement would be to finish the connection of the walking path for Rock Road, which is a main transportation pathway, including storm drain specifically in the game this day, but they have the insufficient storm drain for the amount of roots and density that's going on. And then the Ridenham Street extension, which will connect the gateway site to the Ridenham Street, is another project intended to support increasing activity and density in the area. Street, is another project intended to support increasing capacity and density in the area. Any questions on upgrading the infrastructure?
Oh, all right.
Thank you, I'm just wondering, as far as the White Hill Street extension, is some of our current budget allocated to that as well, in the fact taking into account?
None of the current budget, like none of the current Tura is included in any of these estimates. Is that answer the question?
It does, as far as what this figures, I know we discussed it in current term, I'm just wondering whether there was any budget out of the current term.
So one thing that I need to clarify, if the city does move forward implementing a new urban renewal plan, is if we are allowed to integrate a tax urban renewal budget with it, or would it use the entire incentive? Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, maybe, just going back to basics, but you know, you got other available funding, a lot of these have the 7.8 million CDDG, so, but on some of those same lines, you've got the same total cost as that urban renewal tip. Is this other available funding that we could draw upon for the same purpose in addition to these numbers that are shown?
Yeah, so that's.
How does that fit together?
Yeah, that 7.8 million is, something that's been available, made available to feed Jackson County and town, for the purpose of building more infrastructure to support new housing, to do mitigation projects, and then there's additional 5 million to support economic revitalization. So the city is saying, we believe to put our plan to apply through those funds to be able to support your projects, but it is that that we don't concede those funds, urban renewal will be used in that respect.
Okay, and that's the same thinking, say, with the next one down, with the city street fund, or Ratt Road sidewalk improvements, going to cost 70,000. If we didn't have urban renewal, we'd have to draw on the street fund, is that?
We would draw on one of our comparable projects, yes.
All right.
I'm just thinking one minute to follow up on later, how the new urban renewal needs to have a separate, they can probably, in the last one.
Any other questions on that section?
Okay, increase residency and decrease risk, this is now the yellow side, we'll call it that, we don't keep it now. So really, this goal is to decrease the risk for our community based, particularly climate change based, natural disaster. You can see here, there are all these tree prints to help increase the shade, there's throughout our communities, if you lost 30% of our tree empty, and there's numerous benefits having trees in our community. Fire improvement projects, this is placing bigger, bigger water lines to our highways, increasing availability of water. And then primary, very blocking paths, this would follow up after a hazardous fuel inlet project that is now dropping past, that may help us maintain it more easily. And B, also just gives access to the public to enjoy our nature spaces. And I will say, if you come to question that, and I in particular, we have a platter for a 1.4 million dollar payment here for the hazardous fuel part, in that scenario, we would then use urban renewal for blocking that. And then increasingly, residency, so if a disaster were to occur, we're including emergency supply caches, so that is little caches of storage throughout the city that has communication equipment, safety equipment, et cetera. Community disaster or emergency systems, so that would be flashing and verbal warning with evacuation needed to occur, so compliments and similar texts ever created words. Shaker water distribution, so that's a, I forget, the word for our software, where they, that where in the text of disaster, the text of which they automatically shut off certain water valves, protect the water. So this will be to, for example, if you do not have a kind of water valve, so it would be to replace those valves, we'd be projects replacing the place next to them. And then the next, we can upgrade, so the city does never replace a major water line, we replace it with a significantly safe water line, and it will always stay in a quick shape, and so the urban renewal funds can help aid for that upgrade of water line compared to what it would have been in the past.
Any questions on this?
Is this the complete project outline for this specific goal? Those are projects that I was able to estimate exact cost for. I was in a way of works with urban renewal plans, and we know urban renewal can be long-term plans, we can't always plan exactly what we need in the future, but what a few dollars came in at this same time, we know we're running before these projects, and this is what the cost would be at this time. So there is a starting place to estimate, who our total funding need would be at a minimum. Thank you. So all those different projects added up equals around 10.6 million dollars. So where do all of those projects go in the next month, we estimate that the cost is 10.6 million. I include additional million in there, so the additional 10% to cover the compensation costs of implementing those projects. So what that financial analysis did is it really showed me that, for progress, to be able to achieve all the projects we want to achieve, which is our goal plan, we would want to raise 11.6 million dollars in 2023 dollars. But now that we know that it takes time to do projects, and that inflation occurs, we have all learned quite swiftly in the last two years, and so if we're able to accomplish these projects over 10 years, we would actually want to make sure that we have maximum indebtedness, the total amount that we could borrow over those 10 years, of at least 14.9 million. So as a reminder, maximum indebtedness is how much urban renewal is able to borrow to accomplish these projects. And then the total tick is the amount of money that urban renewal will connect, collect, and reallocation to the other passing districts to be able to pay off that debt of principal interest price. So if we had that one in urban renewal, that have 14.9 million maximum indebtedness, the minimum total need would be 19.9 million. Any questions on what those numbers mean and where they came from? Okay, and I will say, these are estimated numbers, and will be exact once we get some direction from council tonight. So we know how much money that we would like to raise, the minimum to urban renewal. But also important to know that if this urban renewal is a thing that disaster can, our goal, though, very clear early on in council, is that we want to use urban renewal to complement the grants available. And so that product is really designed to complement grants that are already available. The other goal of this urban renewal is to have a large amount of funding available for, largely because we have need right now, but we won't address right now in our community post-fire. The typical urban renewal, it can take five to eight years for urban renewal to accrue enough money to go out through your phone for your first time borrowing another loan. What we're looking to, the art of the goal, because of the urban renewal, is we'll be able to borrow money much sooner than the typical urban renewal. And another goal that we had after the first round that we win, is we would like to as much as possible preserve passing districts' expected revenue, so they continue to provide their resources. So as we count these numbers, it's going to show out that this goal number three, preserving past expected revenue, is going to be our largest challenge. And our next three slides will share with you why that is going to be one of our greatest challenges.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilor Clark?
Yeah, just, I'm just looking at the last slide and the difference between the maximum indebtedness and the total check, and, and that, the percentage of that difference seems larger than what I remember from the last iteration, and I'm not remembering the exact number, so I could be wrong, but is that reflective of an increase in interest rates that are present now possibly?
Let me give you a more sure answer, if I, you know, after this meeting, after financial analysis, the ones that they're actually in the room, I'm not sure if they can, one second. Hector, do you mind, do you mind upgrading Elaine Howard to analyze for this topic? Sorry, Elaine, I'm a stand-by, I'm there. The reason that I will get the numbers this morning with our consultant is that, we contend 11 years, it takes about 11 years to be able to borrow 14.9 million dollars, but it will require an additional tenure of urban renewal to pay off the amount of debt we've borrowed. And so I think it's larger, and probably because that beyond term has to be longer, because you have not the revenue we're earning any year, it's less.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Hector, is there anything in the audience with us? Elaine, when you, when you and I share, will you just raise your hand, Hector, keep an eye out for it to help you see?
Councilor Byrd? Yeah, I have sort of a separate question for it, my worry, worrying, our memory keeps going back to these grant compliments, so it feels like the CDDG is included as an option for a lot of these, and that just seems like quite a bit of workload to be applying to those, and I know regarding the, us doing that, but do you feel capacity within city staff to be prepared for all of those grants and to apply for them with us? Ready?
Yeah, you know, we have the city, we could organize your trails, we apply people, but we do have more than capacity. I would say the pure program itself, which is going to be that 7.8 million infrastructure that might be less than 5 million revitalization, they are on our top priority, that's why that's our key grant, so if you just finish applying, so yeah, we have a top priority of my goals. You know, it, I would say that there is a lot of need in both the Jackson County and here, and so it's a, you know, a value that will get some of that grant money, but we may not get all of it, for the office meeting. If we were to get all of the funding that we needed for those infrastructure projects, it would, we could reduce our maximum indebtedness down to about 7.2 million. I want to point out some reason why here, you're going backwards for a second. Uh, here we go. So it says here that the other available funding for all of our encouraging developers, this is all of our helping to build new commercial buildings. The difficulty with even grant funding to help build commercial buildings from CDDG PR is it's federal credit. So any builder who is building with federal funding is required to build a federal standard. So a lot of people can run into assessment review, do poorly for their wages, and take some other tasks, that really increase the cost of doing a project and also slows down the climate. So we anticipate that most private developers, most commercial developers will not want to participate in CDDG lending opportunities, so urban renewal would be much more appropriate, since it's funding that does not carry that same requirement on there. But for something like Citywood, for example, using those grant funds to solve city infrastructure, you know, that's something that the city does quite often with federal funds, we're very used to working with federal funds, so that.
Councilor Clark?
With the timeline of the grant application process, is it open now, or how long does it go?
So basically, published the final rules last week. And so we hope have that application open kind of in the February, March timeline, which will apply and will be reviewed on four weeks, and it all will run out. And I will say that the selection committee for those funds is made up of representatives from county, representatives from Jackson County, representatives from ES, representatives from our Longchamp neighborhood, and representatives from Silver, our business support, so the more in the future, I cannot develop.
Or you are representative?
I am.
Okay. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'm thinking, we're, we're trying to find out how to figure out how to issue those stocks and really look back at them.
Councilor Penamra?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, thank you, the CDDG grants for home rebuilding, I have the impression that this will be ready many weeks ago, that this were offered to individuals, okay, so that, that wouldn't be going through the city, we might help folks find them, but that those aren't individuals supplied of them, individuals, to get money just right with them.
Exactly, okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, to go on back to our goals, our goals are to leverage grants at the same time that making sure we have the maximum need to see the projects on the year. Our goals are to long-term funding available upfront, and I will also preserve passing districts' expected revenue, so they continue to provide our services to be accepted. We'll walk through the next four slides to show why we will give the obvious challenge. And I want to recognize that goals two and goal three are really counting to each other, that to, to be able to long-term and deal with a project, we take away the expected revenue from passing districts to higher risk, and we'll walk through what that would like in the context. So what we hope is going to happen, and what I do expect to happen, is on the left, this was the idea that, that disaster law has really hurt our community because everything being that, being built back is something brand new, so that we would be having to overrate, though we're going to see a very large spike in property capture, because of the amount of new builders occurring, that is what we expect to happen. What our financial analysis has shown, and we have read on this time again, is that actually, the rebuild that's occurring is going to bring us back to what would have been happened if the fire had never occurred, but will not bring us back much more. Why is that? Okay, go ahead.
So the.
Councilor Penamra?
Thank you.
Um, the data we're looking at is citywide for, okay, so not just the, the confined to ground grid, to the city of town. Okay, so confined to the Burnsville, the city is whole, I'm just sorry, what, what data number did I crush?
Yeah, the presentation tonight, my crush, was the city as a whole, whether the city taxes as a whole, the level of item, if there had been a fire versus if there hadn't been a fire, and also the level of item.
Can I follow up?
Yeah.
So we know that, you know, the level of parks has decreased over time, I'm going to guess that that, the remaining level of parks wasn't significant enough to make a big dent to that, so it's not like we had to counter things, but.
Not, yes.
Yeah, and also you probably took that into account, if you said compared to what had been with the south.
We did, right.
I also have a question about assessed values and how I heard somewhere it's 70%, I'm just wondering, is it up to the homeowner to basically give that figure to the assessor, or how is that, how reliable?
Yeah, so often you walk through how assessed values calculated, but that's really why we're scheming what we're scheming. So over here on the left is a real market value, and so that is the market value that is estimated of every single property that is within the city of town. And the gray is what you see, is value that is already existing on the tax rule. The blue is the growth value, so that was just the mark, the natural market change of the value that had already existed. And then the orange, which was called exception value, and that's the value that comes out of new buildings, so every new building is new additional tax on the tax that wasn't there before. And so if you can see, mayor, do you mind if I, I'm on council program? Yeah, because I wear that screen, thanks. So is the blue the 3% that happens over here? Okay, so blue on the right is a 3%, the blue on the left is driven by the market. So here, 22, thank you, there's about 5% real market value increase, 21% on the left, 1%. 2021, that's 1%. Maybe one, three, it's 18% of the real market value. I'm going to go get my mask because I seem to have a cough. Um, I hope you're sure that y'all need a fire. Impact it. You have lots of value from the fire.
Can I ask if we take a few minutes for you to wear these guys? So five minutes to stretch your legs and, sorry.
No, that's all right.
I know what exciting part, uh, my thesis, but that's okay.
I'm all tired.
Oh, it's like, no.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you. I have no way to jump back into it. Okay, perfect, coming back in. So on the left is the real market value, that is the market value of a certain property. And on the right is the assessed value. The assessed value is the value that actually goes to the one. So what I actually notice over on the left is that there's a lot of variation in the blue. And so that's the growth that occurs from market changes. The real market value, that depends on market conditions every year. 2020 was about 5% growth rate, about 4% in 2021, and 18% in this past year. And then the orange is the exception value, and that's the amount of new build that occurs within our tax area. And councilor Conamara, this is data for City of Towne as well. And so as you can see, assessed value, oops, one way. Assessed value is a portion of the real market value. Um, and it is increasingly a smaller, smaller portion of the real market value. The brief light is, is because the growth value is captured 3%. It can be lower for 3%, but that cannot be lower than 3%. And so that huge growth that we're experiencing in our real market value, which can become the influence of all the new deals going on, is not reflected in our assessed values. The other reason why is we have less assessed value than expected is because the way we calculate the exception value to assessed value is you take the exception value from the real market value and then multiply it with what's called a changed property ratio. And that changed property ratio is different for each type of property. It's different for a single-family home, for a multifamily apartment, for a manly family, which is commercial. And it is a ratio that is recalculated every year based off of the last year's previous data. And so for talent this year, which is paid for all of Jackson County, that changed property ratio averages to about 0.5. So from our rebuild, we expect to see after, the entire rebuild is going to be $140 million to go onto our tax rule in exception value, sorry, to go under real market value and exception value. But only 70 million of that will show up on our assessed value, will actually be taxable. Is that anything that's an exception value and growth value clear? For what those mean, help with Conamara?
So I, I have a good one, so maybe can keep using a couple of different concepts. So I'm just going to ask a very naive question. So my place burned down, okay? I started paying like a third of what I paid before because there's no hermit on the way. I build a house, now I'm paying for that in hermit. Is that reflected in the orange exception or is that something else? In this chart?
Your new house is in the orange.
Okay, thanks.
I was thinking property is a mirror.
Okay, yeah, that explains it, thank you.
So really what I'm hoping this chart makes you all of it, what we expect to see, that kind of big spike in value has occurred on the real market value side. But on the assessed value side, it's not currently, but because of this natural repression of assessed values.
Councilor Conamara?
So I'm, I'm wondering about, um, so we came up with 2023 based on what's already happened, right?
What is actually happened?
Yes. So I'm just wondering, you know, 2024, if a lot more people, oops, could, is it possible, based on the data that you've seen so far and knowing what hasn't been rebuilt yet, that 2022 to 2023 to 2024 isn't going to be just linear? It might be more, uh, more occur, whether it's when we see more of a shock upwards in 2024, based, based on?
So unfortunately not, I did have this conversation with the assess yesterday, or you say the assess of office yesterday. Um, just seeing what they expect and project as well. And it is a case where we're at now, so as of today, 80% of the properties have fully been living on it to rebuild. So probably about 50% of those have rebuilt, or the assessed 50% have gone on the tax rule since January 1, 2022. So by January, did you say that again, 1%? Yeah, I got it, so my, and this is my rough and robust story, I don't think you would actually prefer, but by January 1, 2022, I would say 30 to 45% of our rebuild was back on the tax rule. This time year, we expect, um, about another 15 million to come onto the tax rule. And then a year after that, we expect about 12 million to come on the tax rule, slowly regaining to the rebuild from the buyer. And so all of those projections are incorporated in here. And what you can see is when you do, when you project yourself long-term, that with a disaster or no disaster, we'll end up in really the same place. So another way to think about this is, with the buyer, we lost $50 million in assessed value a guard. We could have expected that $50 million to increase by at least 3% every year over the last three years. So that puts us close to 60 to 70 million in hold. And we expect our entire rebuild, that's 70 million back on the assessed value percentage. So it comes out that what we lost is regained, but we don't get much more. This is part of the lead, but it's not what we expected in any ways, but having more accurate data we have now is our best guess at the moment.
Yeah, I'm, um, forget my ignorance here, so I've got a lot, got a 1,000 square foot house on it or something. It burns down, a real rebuilt thousand, a 3,000 square foot house on my lot. How is the assessed value determined on my new house or does it have any relationship to my old house?
It doesn't have any relationship to your old house, in that scenario, but say it costs you a million bucks to build that almost like $3,000 luxury home. Only 500,000 will go on the assessed values. 500,000, about.
Captain, why?
Because that is what the changed property ratio is, it's 0.52.
Does that relate to the market value or the size of the hole or like where does that come from? I'm going to say that for you.
Yeah, so I want to, exactly, I have a spreadsheet on the assessed website and happy to share with council. I'm not 100% sure on how that formula is calculated, but it is used on historical data within the county that compare already existing real market value to the already existing assessed value. So let's say 10 years ago, that ratio was closer to 0.0. Currently it is 0.52. And largely that's because real market has enabled to grow, you know, with no cap rate. But assessed value has grown at a cap rate until our ratio just keeps getting larger and larger.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm getting, I think I'm closer to understanding.
I would love it if assessors and staff over here helped me ask it in the future as well. It's new stuff to me. It's complex as well. Um, so do we, uh, is there any scenario where they will make an adjustment to that? I mean, yeah, great question. Yeah, it seems to me that that's probably, they're probably motivated to do that. I do know it is formulated, I don't know how much control they have over the board, so I'll follow up on. I would imagine dictated by some sort of policy. Yeah, I'm here, and it'd be interesting to know, um, if it is, it could be amended, who would be the jurisdiction that amended?
This is Elaine, may I, um, pop in here?
Who is that? Elaine Howard?
Yeah. That, the change property ratios are a, uh, an outcome of measures 547 and 50, and they can only be changed if, uh, there is a vote of the peoples that change the way our property tax system works. So that's not something the Department of Revenue can do on their own or the assessors can do on their own.
I have a follow-up question about it. So, um, Elaine, do you know of any, um, exceptions or policies that allow them to adjust that in the event of something as catastrophic as what happened here in Towne?
I don't know of anything, that doesn't mean there isn't, but I know of nothing.
One more question. So I, I'm understanding from what you're saying that, um, that ratio is statewide and fixed statewide?
It's every, every county assessor does this in their own county. So that change property ratio is different in every county, uh, depending on what the ratio of their existing real market value to existing assessed value is per property.
And that's one way, I would imagine?
Yes.
Yes. Still, I would like to question ask it. Of course, yeah. Councilor Virus?
So please help me ensure I'm understanding this. It is sounding like the house insurance which created by a natural disaster is also making this larger discrepancy between assessed value and the real market value.
That is interesting.
Okay. I really curious to see if there's any precedent anywhere else that is, um, that takes note of this larger than normal discrepancy that is created by that. Relax, I'm better for.
Annomally?
I don't know, yeah, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else?
So what does this mean for urban renewal financing? So what you might report with a 30-year urban renewal, this is what it would look like, and so specific to the city. So this is, can't really see it this year, I apologize, but, ooh. City property tax value projections, um, in 2023 dollars. So this is it with the same budget power every single year, it's going to the same budget power as this year. So with a 30-year urban renewal, you know, the city would, uh, reallocate, you know, in the beginning around 100,000 of our property tax revenue per year, and around the 10-year mortgage to the 200,000. 2025, you're back 300,000, et cetera. So this is if we did a, a classic linear renewal. That's related to respond to the old type number. So we are giving all of projections and predictions. Whether it's a rebuild, it's often hard to predict what will happen. So it allows us to make some current review. Um, we could take an approach, for example, we could say for the first three years, um, we're not going to, we're not going to put any of the tax value back onto the tax rule of the other district. Because we know, for example, for the city, we will keep not grant funding for the city to remain whole for the next three to five years. After that time, in the grant funding run out for the city, we will start putting some of that tax rule back onto this tax and district's tax revenue to help offset the impacts with other tax and districts. And so with that approach, we would have funding in between the 3.1 to 6.2 million on the front. Um, it would be impacted by tax and districts to depend on the other level that occurs. The issue with this process, which is bigger smaller jurisdictions, is administratively burdensome. We would have to submit a report every single year to the assessor that declares how much money your urban renewal actually wants to collect.
Uh, so how much money that urban renewal wants to collect?
Collect, thank you.
Now, Councilor Virus?
Um, please feel free to answer this question until the end of the presentation, if it's necessary to do that. I'm wondering what the state. I'm wondering what the state slash town has the capacity to spend in the next six years.
So that is a great question. And one thing I would like to mention here is, it's much harder to spend money than you would think of our support projects. I still would like to look at that, however, to be clear.
A follow up question on that, maybe that, that could be subject to an analysis and then just an adjustment on capacity, right? I mean, I know that's sounding pretty quick and simple, but, but with an analysis, we'd answer that question and we'd also be able to plan.
Well, I, yeah, what I would recommend, you know, if urban renewal was for the city of town, so it would start collecting its first revenue this year, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And it'll commit its first loan issuance, social bond issuance in year twenty twenty five. So I would recommend that a current urban renewal, you could tell the game plans to hire somebody to put in place those actual action plans. So when that funding comes in, it's much easier to quickly spend that money on the projects that you want to have. So the, so the urban renewal agency will have about two years to be able to prepare for major projects. And I do know that Elaine has worked with other districts that has done the under levy approach, and she's happy to share what her experience was and benefits.
My question, I wonder if she's still here, however.
Elaine, are you there, by any chance?
I'm back. I, I lost your audio feed and had to go out and back in, but I am back, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Elaine, could you just describe a little bit about how the urban renewal has worked with other districts that you work with?
Sure, I'll, I'll give you a couple of concrete examples. One is the city of Wilsonville, where in working with taxing districts, they decided not to close their district as early as they could have because of compression issues for the school district. So the city council adopted what they termed a permanent under levy. And they, their under levy was set at receiving an X million dollars of money per year, and the rest of it would be shared with all the taxing districts. Like Jordan said earlier, that then means that they have to do an annual calculation of how, how much assessed value they're going to actually take to get that X million dollars. And you have to fill that out on a form every year before July first for the county assessor's office. But the city of Wilsonville has done that for the last ten years on two of their different urban renewal districts. I have another district that was adopted a year and a half ago in Lincoln City, where at the city council hearing, the city council directed a fifteen percent under levy of any future TIF revenues annually as a nod to the taxing districts to give them a little bit more of the money or allow them to share a little bit in the growth of the area. And again, that is something then that has to be calculated annually on the form that goes through the assessor's office. So those are two good examples of where the under levy has worked, is working.
Councilor Power?
Yeah, I wanted an expansion on administratively burdensome. I was wondering, would that be burdensome for the city of town to request that report, you know, exceeding a certain number? I'm just wondering how hard that would be.
So we, you know, if they now decide to take this approach, what I would recommend is we establish a formula that is written within the urban renewal plan. And then the challenge is not for the city to do over the course of a ten to twenty year lifespan. I think where some of the districts have gotten in trouble is that if you wanted it to be based off of projections everywhere, I love data and I love getting data, but I could imagine that someone with a nice team who's less comfortable with data, it'd be a much more difficult task to run the analysis of this type of levels, everybody. So it really depends on how we set up, how we would run our project.
Anybody else?
Councilor Power? Is this where you're talking about duration, that you get a tougher operation tomorrow on your first line?
Well, really, what we can't just base duration on is what financial approach we're kind of taking. So what I'm really looking to have a discussion around tonight in the Diet Mission Council is which option do we want to move forward with? You know, option one, the full test would be, you know, getting as much funding as we can as possible to do these projects at a, in tax the taxing districts. Option two, founder Gretchen would be less money, less quickly, but less than you have in taxing districts. And under levy, and the under levy would fall in between those. Yeah, can you guys one second here? And so whatever direction council gives us tonight on what's waiting, I will consult it over the next five days to run the final financial analysis and finish drafting the report and the plan, which we will review inside of next week. The challenge we face to be able to get this on the ballot is we will move forward our planning to come to review by end of next week. So that is the financial number, yes. And then, Councilor Virus, can I hand out?
Thank you. Are the grant mountains that are outlined in this spreadsheet included the maximum amount in we can apply them, the amount of grants that's being received from those grants, or the somewhere in between? I'm wondering what for actual bill estimate of grant in the mix.
I would say the grant you're showing us likes the amount available to a platform. You know, I'm assuming that town could get somewhere between two to three million for those grant projects, right? Because also projects will be in its name account as well.
I'm trying to recognize what?
Because there's also projects needed in Phoenix's account as well.
So that's another of you anticipate receiving overall food and drinks outlined in that, so she already definitely knows.
I would say for the seven point eight million available in this section, my primary sector would be two to three million. For the funding for small businesses, you know, this section committee has to prioritize that. So we do expect five million to be distributed to local businesses over the course of six years. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna go back through the tables that you all can see. Oh, we'll start with it. Do you think it's about to start? The, of course, we really will have some program that is, that may only step in a six year period. Just so you all know, this city of portable housing size currently has a hundred thousand dollars in it, and that's in one year of collection. Railroad transportation grants are quite a lot, there's structure grants available right now. And we just take applying for those grants, looking for them and applying for them, so. That's at the point eight million, I would say if you're practical for a contract, two to three million, it will be a choice of the section committee, however. Five point two million will go directly to the disciples. That's the same seven point eight million there. I would say up high, the five hundred and sixty five thousand potential grant, those are grants that are actively applying for right now, and we've received good feedback on. The one point four million in FEMA that I will apply for and receive good feedback on. And when the city still has remaining, our arco grants that we have not yet fully spent, we have about one point two, one point three million remaining in arco grants. And we have received about one million from the state toll for the reimbursement amount of fire covered by the two of the last two years. So I will say, you know, this, this, we're talking about running an analysis of the taxing of the city. That's something I would share, wanting to decide which cap we all want to take. But my, you know, problem with the analysis is, right now the city has high levels of cap because of the grant influxes that we attract. There's a long term covenant that's not robust.
Yeah, one for by.
So just really quick rounding up now, it's looking like there is about five million dollars worth of projects. And here that is connected to the seven point eight billion CDC grant, which we were anticipating into the year after, in real money. And so offsetting that would be toward, or offsetting the deficit in what's available versus what we actually would see.
Sure, would be one of the potential funding sources to offset. If sure does not occur, if urban renewal does not get established, you know, I would look at other potential funding sources for your projects, including other better grant, since they're still online. So if they're going with a new restaurant, it should be spending funds, which can be high project, high value projects. We could look at some local improvement districts that, et cetera. There's other that we can find, but it would be thus within more product specific than under urban renewal.
And that, again, exponentially in the state administration.
Looking for applying for and managing grants does state capacity.
Thank you.
Councilor Power?
Thank you. Looking at goal one, housing. So they just have only one point six million. You know, most of the creators would go there in the twenty twenty three dollars. I have to say that kind of surprised me, that's less, it feels like less than we originally spoke, this was kind of the you know, more geared towards recovering our loss to portable housing. Can, can you remind, remind me how many units of portable housing have been lost as a result?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly. So we lost three hundred and thirty three many factor homes, and we lost additional thirty six subsized portable housing units. We expect, we have in the pipeline currently, a hundred units of subsized housing. And we expect a hundred units of subsized portable housing. We do expect Anderson Vista and their thirty six units to be rebuilt within the next two years.
The hundred units probably would translate to flats and twenty eight advantage plus?
Right.
Okay. Town of local estates?
They will have eighty nine spaces.
And are we counting that towards?
I'm not counting that in the, I can't find the numbers that I just shared.
Okay, okay, fine.
What if I'm counting the subsized portable housing? I'm unsure how it costs it depending on how many after grants, if it will be considered more forceful, limited, or low.
Thank you, that's good. Can I, I'm sorry, I'll walk a little bit. Yeah, so so we're still not there, we're still not at the three hundred and thirty three, if this helps. I'm also looking at how, and I really like the way you spelled this out, so five hundred thousand, so half a million of, I guess, SDC forgiveness, SDC waiver, it's, it looks like from the graph, that that's what is fifty units. Because you have two of those, and you get a hundred units.
So what I was thinking was, what is really reasonable for our town to be able to achieve based on what we've seen ahead of me? So that's super good loan program, you know, it's a program with an SDC.
Yeah, SDC.
SDC, forgiveable loan program. Could grant five hundred thousand dollars, which is the X man SDC amount for a hundred unit apartment.
Okay, so half a million, which is a hundred units.
Of SDC.
Of SDC. And I, and I think we've run into that, talking to non profit developers, they say, you know, I can make this work if we can forgive SDCs. That's the partnership essentially, they know, they do everything, we just say, okay. Which, one of the things that's very attractive to me in that is, is that doesn't supply a lot more for the, for the part of good sake. Yeah, I'm wondering what would be the pros and cons of increasing that? So looking at the forgivable loans, maybe saying, what if we were to say two hundred units for portable housing, and lose one million there? And I'm, and I'm asking because I'm thinking, well, our leadership has been thinking about capacity and what can, you know, how much built the land is there? So, so I'm wondering if you could share a little of your thoughts away, did you, did you weigh that? It was a matter of priorities versus what could we possibly build in our town in this time?
The new one's mostly based off of practicalities of how much could we expect to be able to influence in the period of ten years through urban renewal programs? The one thing that we're leaning on from town is land that is of a big enough size and then a good enough location to establish a four, a size of portable housing. So a big site is one such great location. Council has talked about Chuck Robert, so there might be some investments made in that. There are other large parcels, but then there are real, or do we know that is an impediment for some of the offers to come in, be able to build some shares of portable housing there? So with more kind of approach of, you know, what is an attainable goal that we can really expect to see happen here in town? We can absolutely increase the goals, we can absolutely increase the amount of building around. In this exercise, what I was trying to do is, what is the practical realistic number of how much real money can one collect to be able to accomplish the goal we want to accomplish? But my hope is with programs like these, and I will say this number is significantly different than our last grant, largely because our last grant volume scale town to really build our own program. We were estimating to have three hundred and fifty thousand per unit, and we're trying to fund that level of need for building. But because the state is providing all of these home rebuilding program funds, that really places the pressure that you need on our renewal to provide those specific housing needs. And that is why the total passing need is so much lower than the first go around of the town.
Councilor Power?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions, you're talking about what we were looking at before when we were basing urban renewal on taxing, like a, 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 a year back. It, I'm gonna, I don't really remember what that number was, but I think this is like coming in at about a month or so. It's, it's hugely reduced, you know, where it's, because there's something, there's always like three numbers to remember, I can't remember. It's, it's a huge reduction, exactly.
The last pin is supposed to be seventy four million tickets. And, you know, this annual analysis is based off, would be about a twenty million ticket.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The projects that we have listed for in this packet, I, you know, when I look at them, I recognize that some of them, you know, be managed with C I D, our C, through our C I Q program and things like that, so we're not necessarily adopting, I mean, we're not necessarily, whatever decisions we need for you to pursue, we're not necessarily adopting this as a hard and fast project list, right? I mean, generally what we would pursue were, were to get approved by the voters. But this would go through the normal approval process for the city. Um, but this would go through the normal approval process for the state, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so what, the way we need to build our urban renewal later forward is we need to clearly explain why we're asking for a lot of them we're asking. And so this project is a preliminary analysis to estimate how much money we need. Um, absolutely the projects can change, absolutely the distribution dollars can change, you know, so that's best in this moment. And so y'all know every moment changing our assets at the time.
Yeah, and when I say that, you know, some of these can be handled through the C I P, I also understand that that's queuing that up in the, in the long. Yeah, it is longer to, and it's, we find ourselves back in the long haul recovery scenario. So I don't need to, to, um, to diminish the importance of any of that, uh, fight with that question. I just want to note that, um, I mean, I think I just want to say out loud that, um, as we, as we consider the three options, um, there's flexibility in this. And then it also is subject to the regular process in the long run anyway, so. Anybody else have any more questions? I just want to say, um, really quickly, uh, and I'll take your questions. I'm, uh, really impressed with, uh, the council's preparation for this discussion and the really smart questions that are being asked tonight. So, thank you, everybody. Uh, Council Penamara?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah. So as far as, um, as priorities change, we can, we can move money around. Um, are there any restrictions? Can we move from one category to another? Let's say grant money just was in a budget in one category that we didn't anticipate and feel like, oh, one went back to another category. That is also possible or?
That is possible, yes.
I got one more.
Council Penamara?
So you're asking the, the decision you're asking the press are those three options? Um, yeah. So you're, so the first option, you're putting it out to probably about twenty years before we can get everything paid off, although we have that six point two million start. Um, that under reduction, thirty years, and then the under levy. Um, based on what we've said tonight and in the past, and what Elaine has said, um, I, I think I remember that they under levy is something that you could decide basically at any point if you wanted to.
So if we write it in our plan, you know, if we write it in our plan, one of the two ways. I hope, I'm gonna, two way to correct it or say it's wrong, because I am a recent learner of under levying. You know, one word to say is that every single year, the Tura board will consider an under levy. And then they can just consider it every year and make decisions on that. Another way we could do it is we could write it in formulae. Saying every year, we will under levy by at least this much, or we will under levy by this formulae. Um, and the benefit to doing the formulae is that it helps A, other jurisdictions like the city, plan through what may as they expect. Um, whereas if you say the board will consider every year, it's a huddle. Um, it is difficult for citywide tax districts to reject it or whatever.
Council Penamara?
So the formula would be other taxing districts, we're gonna leave you at least a million bucks, or two million bucks versus Tura will take at least a million bucks and you can have whatever's left. Do we have a choice there?
Unfortunately not. So that was vital that we could say, Tura's responses, then any extra can go back. It cannot be on that, um, it has to say the amount people put back on the tax bill. And whatever amount, we didn't put back, we would go to Tura.
Four more?
Um, Elaine, here's a hand you better than I can.
I, could, could you read, repeat the question? That was very unclear to me what the question is.
Do you guys like concert whatever? So if we didn't under levy, could we say that each year Tura wants this middle amount of money, this new amount of assessed value to correct taxes on? And the rest can be distributed?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's possible.
Or if we could say that we just want to take the taxes off the fully formulated assessed value every year, and whatever additional can go to the other tax districts?
You, you can really establish anything. All the assessor needs from you is to say on what value you are wanting taxes levied for the urban renewal area. So they give you a form and you put in a dollar amount on that form of the amount of taxes against which you want the Tura levy to go. And the rest of that will go to the taxing districts. So however you want to construe that, um, you, you can, you just have to figure out what dollar amount to put in on that form to make that happen.
Thanks, Elaine. No, it's not, please go ahead. And the, um, so I know that the, uh, it's the value of January, in January of the, of the calendar year. That the, um, the assessment that compared to November is based on, and that comes out like September, October. What I'm getting at, um, Elaine and Jordan, is, uh, how much, um, leeway, uh, how much time essentially would there be for the, for the, uh, taxing districts to find out how much they're gonna get? If I recall correctly, whatever that is, they go, I'm not sure if it goes into that fiscal year budget or the public fiscal year budget. But, um, it would be nice to have actual, uh, like last time we had a sense of numbers, because, you know, some of these districts have really huge reserves. And it's very, you know, it's a little, it's a little, little room and all of that, but whether that's significant, um, to, to, you know, to their accounting and to their budgeting. It's less than, you know, point five percent of their budget, it's something really small. Um, I think that's a different, uh, perception than, uh, of uncertainty and it's, it's a large perspective. So, um, sorry, that was just a very important question. I, I can't answer that one, but I would love to respond to you again, if you're not on that one.
Yeah. So with that, there are projections, you know, the city can expect the same amount of tax revenue that we would have received if a fire had never happened, starting in the next three to five years. So urban renewal will reduce the amount of tax revenue that we would have received compared to if the fire hadn't happened. To what extent, you know, right now, the analysis looks like probably opposition work? Is what the city will be at risk of losing the flesh that we had prior to the fire. And that puts it into, um, more of a simple terms, uh, for how about when it comes to the level of the whole of the approach. And I would say the city is the most impacted.
You'll say what?
The city is the, the most impacted proportionally with that for the program.
Council Wyers? So with the under levy, I realize that using the formula, what's all taxing districts, so much effect in her place. Is there a way to adjust that formula partially into the entire lifespan of the urban renewal project? Elaine, can you take that one? Do you have a question?
I can take it, but you'll need to repeat it, please.
Can we adjust our formula used in the under levy process? Partially into the lifespan of the urban renewal project? Or are we locked into a specific formula for the entire question?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you can change the amount that you under levy every single year. Uh, you, you are not stuck unless you write it in your plan, a certain formula. If you write in your plan a certain formula, then you would have to amend your plan to change that formula. But per the assessor's rules, you just have to put in a number on the, it's called a UR fifty form, every year by July first. And the assessor has no rules for how much you can change that or if you use the same formula. But like you were talking about a few minutes ago, in order to give the other taxing jurisdictions some kind of certainty over what they want, or, or over what they're going to get. The, you'll want to have something that's fairly stable so that they'll know how much money, a, at least a minimum of how much money they can expect. And we, we can work with you on trying to, and the assessor on trying to figure out how to word that into an urban renewal plan. I don't think that's something we have to decide tonight. Um, you, you could just decide the under levy looks good and let's make sure it works correctly for everybody, all the taxing districts and Tura. Um, but it, you, you have total flexibility as it is statutorily written.
Thank you.
Council Penamara?
Yeah, so just, uh, continuing with that, um, really good thought from Council Wyers. In the, in, in looking at the city, the most impacted district, can you break that? That is cool, okay. Um, and, and the fact that the city does have reserves right, right now, um, has cash, as you said. It, it almost seems like, okay, so for five years, it's pretty, it's a pretty good situation. So maybe we would want to, you know, take the full tip. And then maybe now after five years, start to reduce it and reduce that in a predictable way for, for the other taxing districts. It sounds like that's something that we could, to Council Wyers, but we can introduce at a certain point. Um, Elaine, I'm guessing that if we amend our plan to introduce a formula or change a formula, that's a minor amendment, something we can just do, uh, as Tura council?
It would, it, it depends on what you specify in your plan. So the statute does not require it to be anything more than a minor amendment. If you write your plan that an under levy is something more than a minor amendment, then, um, it, it would take more than that. There, there is, uh, provision in the statute that when you do an under levy, you do have to consult and confer with other taxing districts. It doesn't say a time period, it doesn't say anything more than consult and confer. And that language, um, was written in the statute prior to other consult and confer language that establishes a forty-five day timeframe. So the first language doesn't have a forty-five day timeframe, but it just says that you need to let the other taxing districts know what you're doing.
Correct.
Correct.
Good money. Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
Yeah. It's up.
Elaine, I have a question.
Pardon?
Sorry, I can't even help. Elaine, did Council want to take the option of an under levy open? Remember I think our time is right now? Would we go ahead and run our financial analysis as if it was the full tip? And with part of our control in the current period, we could discuss with the other taxing districts what type of under levy they would be comfortable with? And get feedback for that process for inclusion in the final plan? Or would we want to understand how that under levy works prior to submitting the public review?
Um, I, I, if I do not answer this, uh, correctly, just rephrase it for me. But I think it's so hard to hear with the masks on and over the, o, o, over the audio system. But I think the question is, if we write the plan as a full TIP plan, you can make your decisions on under levy as you go forward in the future. And yes, you can do that. You can write the plan as a full TIP plan, so that's option number one. And then as part of your consult and confer now, or as part of your consult and confer in the timeframe before you actually get TIP revenue. You could work with the taxing districts and the assessor's office and figure out how best to do an under levy. An under levy is always available to you.
Council Wyers?
There, um, or I don't see there is a staff recommendation on this?
There isn't a what?
A staff recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
And I would look to Elaine to some push and her recommendation. You know, balancing the need of keeping the city whole, but also balancing the need of addressing these impacts that occurred from the fire that some of them will not be addressed without the help of additional money. Now, I would be very interested in looking at different under levies in there. Um, understanding how we can balance those two conflicting goals in a way that we could make it work for our community. Uh, I think what's part of this process is time, and to be able to run that analysis, you know, takes more time than we have right now and would watch at the public view to keep that May twenty twenty-three goal. So my recommendation would be, you know, let's move forward tonight, would be under levy policy checked. We'll run the financial analysis so that we can know the full impact, the full potential impact in taxing districts. And then I can spend the next, you know, month, month and a half working with those taxing districts to understand what their financial chains are, and where they need flexible and helping. Um, they go up and they're ready to support another aspect of the renewal.
Can you, um, expand on the last thing that you said? Would they be flexible for letting go of some of, what was it you said?
Yeah. For example, as Council Penamara shared, running up the city has reserves available. So I would like a calculation to see how long can the city go with those reserves to forward, with the, the impact and how they're going to last year. I would ask that same question of the other jurisdictions, so we can understand what their financial positions are and how, who might impact them to help design another levy to look like.
That answered my question, thank you. And I, you know, I think, I think it's. It's important as we have this conversation to recognize, um, how that forty-five day period works, uh, in this process. And, um, I mean, you know, we have a proposal going into it. And every jurisdiction has an opportunity to give us their feedback. And then, and then even though we are against a time crunch at this moment, um, that, that forty-five day period is an extension to that, to some, to some degree. And, um, in that, um, we are going to change it further. And now, uh, for, further analyze the feedback from the public and from the jurisdictions and, and make whatever decision is on the other side. So, um, I guess what I'm just trying to do is just, uh, illustrate a contrast between, you know, the, the crunch that we have over just the next couple of days. But then also we have the soldiers, that the whole feedback period that we saw work very well in the last process, right? I mean, it really recourse our, our whole direction after we were able to hear from the other jurisdictions and their concerns. So, um, I have faith in that, in that process, uh, again, uh, in regards to the tight timeline. Thanks. Uh, Council Penamara?
Um, I don't know, as we referate now, we start to weigh in on which of the three, our thoughts on which of the three.
I think before we do that, I'd like to take, um, the speaker request form, um, just so that if there's anything from the public at this point that helps inform, uh, how we had. Does anybody object to that? Seems like a good time to do it. Are we done with questions? I guess is what I'm asking, before we start discussing. All right, so I have one. Is there any that have arisen since the conversation has started? Any online? Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Um, okay, so, uh, Cole? Yeah.
I'll do that point two.
Are you gonna, uh, wait, you, you're gonna not do nine point one, just nine point two, okay? Uh, all right, so yes, it's appropriate to start weighing in. Council Penamara?
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I also appreciate the, the 45 day period where, um, at the end of which we can make some changes, certainly those that are, you know, are beneficial to the other districts. Um, you know, it, that is an easy move. Um, so I think I, what I would like to see is a full tip, uh, plan, which I, which I feel is, is so much of the bad affection from what, whatever I last time was essentially what was asked for by some of the districts. Um, and, uh, also, but in the presentation, talk about, uh, the interest, uh, uh, that's for tonight and in an under levy after a certain point. And I'm particularly interested on the impact of this meeting. And there are some managers' analysis and how that would work. But I think it, it's good to start with the pool. Say, if we're looking, you know, we're open to scaling back as appropriately, especially as far as the city is concerned, that they get their feedback on the whole, the whole plan. And I also do want to say thanks for this really excellent work. I think we've heard a big deal of that. I believe a big thanks to Elaine Howard and Nick, got the very solution. Natalie would have been right there with me about the last, the last meeting.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Council of Buyers?
Hi, I'm Andrew with that assessment and I would like to go with the full impact and hear about potential strategies for, um, we need an under levy and what process options are required. And yes, thank you for the care and correcting, incredible answers to all the questions you had.
Anybody else? Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I think I'm on the same page as has been a lot of the guests. Um, and a bit disoriented, um, I would say compared to, uh, you know, what we were expecting, uh, the gap between the, the growing, uh, gap between, uh, real market value and assessed value is not something that I was aware was that dramatic. Uh, but, um, I can't see why you wouldn't, uh, you know, move forward with the full tip and, um, and talk about, you know, other options at the next dates, uh, in accordance with the, uh, public review period.
I have, uh, some, some comments too. I, um, I think, I, I mean, I don't think, I, I know that I agree with, um, the approach that, um, the council, um, is suggesting. Um, and because, I, I mean, I think it's similar to the approach of our last, you know, go around where, um, it was, you know, the full proposal subject to a 45 day period. And I've said this before and I just want to reiterate, I think what will make all the difference as to whether or not this is a, hopefully a civilized conversation with, with our community and, um, and it's just not so subject to misinformation and, um, uh, and, um, you know, um, controversy that we do, uh, do what we didn't do very well the last time, which is front load as much communication as we possibly can that this is a proposal that's subject to conversation, that's subject to amendment. And eventually, uh, the idea being that, um, we hone down our plans or hone them up, as the case may be, based on those hearings and that, and that feedback. And, um, so starting from here, encouraging as much feedback as we can get, hopefully not with a lot of, um, foregone conclusion, if we do a good job of communicating how this process works and, and why we approach it the way we do. Uh, so that we can have, um, a really much more informed conversation. I, I, that this was a, uh, this was a four-year time kind of approach. So please know that I, uh, that I know where the responsibility is for, what that's by. Um, but I think that under your leadership, we can do a much better job and we start very, very early in, um, with as much information as we possibly can. One thing I would hope to do is disseminate that information, um, as fast as we can and in the most reasonable way that we can to all of the committee commission members. Um, these are representatives of our community, they're representative of our, of our city government, and they can help us, um, with the discussion about the process. And if we, uh, I, my last comment on it is that I think if we can focus our communication on process more than proposal, um, uh, that's not to say not to be transparent about the proposal, but if we, if we can really get a deeper understanding within the community and the other jurisdictions, what the process means and how we get to a good decision, whatever that may be, um, I think we might be a little more successful than we were last time. We fell way short on the communication side. I think we can really do much better this time. Um, it is a, uh, I just want to, uh, tip my hat. It is a value that Council of Buyers, um, brings to our conversations often about making sure that we do a really good job of educating and being transparent and all those things. So appreciate your, your consistent reminder on this one. Sorry, that was a little long-winded, but I, I'm, I have PTSD from the last experience. I want to see us, uh, if, if we're gonna go down in plans, let's go down in informed plans. Thanks, everybody. Is there any more comments? Do you have what you need?
So the speaker, I'm hearing consensus that we will perform a full, uh, formal analysis of the full tip. Um, but we will include in the Plan 14, we will bring 31 next week.
Thank you. Is there anybody that objects to what's being proposed at this point? I have a consensus.
Great. We have one more, I have one topic, but Mayor Wondery's next. You agree with the decision by you?
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm so, uh, so in study session mode. Letting you run your agenda. Yes, thank you. Um, so the next item is a 9.2 consideration to propose a renewal of district boundary. Is that?
Great. So the speaker before the potential analysis, you will need to have a boundary in place. So we'll boundary the foundation arrows presented to council last Monday. On the Council of Buyers' feedback, and that feedback has been integrated into that first boundary. And that is in your status report in front of you or on the slide behind you. And so I'm just looking for any final amendments by Councilor Juszabry, and then just points a motion to move forward with the proposal after that session.
I just have, oh, Council Penamara?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so if we were to move forward with this boundary and this, I would be, uh, it's fairly easy to remove something from the boundary to reduce it. Um, before we go, before we finalize that, before we fight it. I'm trying to remember the, you know, the changes we talked about. There was the 2% and all of that, but if we were to make a decision to, in, in some way reduce that over the 2%, I mean, that's a question to do early after the 45 day, um, that would be fair. So technical answer, we can make any changes to the boundary up to the point of the first read of orders. I'll say up to the point of sending it to the ballot, um, we had our recommendation in this case. The hesitation I make is that if we remove a substantial portion that adds high property value to it, we would redo the financial analysis. Um, so it's just a caveat of a lot of time to be able to redo that financial analysis to produce the official numbers. And while I have my phone, I'm gonna go back to this. One more clarification, Councilor Clark, if you would ask about sidewalks? Yes, the sidewalks are then that are included in the boundary description.
Okay.
Councilor Clark?
Is that, is that, is that saying that the boundary goes up to her, the side street?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Council Penamara? So if we were to say decide to move public land, which doesn't, uh, weigh, doesn't go into the financial analysis, that would be a huge deal. That would not, that would not be a huge deal.
Council of Buyers?
I'm getting into a discussion this week, um, on the financial reflection. As I think about our conversation, you're my thinking. Um, I'm really excited about the potential of having this sort of new project in the world. I think that there's a lot of, I can come and do it. And I have reflected on the fact that if we include that portion of Chuck Roberts' park, there is the potential for that to muddy the waters of the nation and take away from the goals that we are trying to, we're trying to have. I think that we're representing the community people that are really dedicated to supporting our whole municipal recovery from this fire. And I want to consider further the potential of having that piece of, that additional piece drawing attention that is unwarranted away from the overall decision-making and conversation connected to this entire project. And I don't want to see that because I know people will be impacted by that, which are the people who need the most support in our recovery. Um, but it is still something to think about as we're within this conference. And I would love to hear other council leaders in this discussion put in with their opinion on that.
I'd like to weigh in. Um, I agree with you, Council of Buyers. And, um, I, I must, I must say that when the conversation initially happened at the last meeting, um, I, my particular focus was, was just on the conversations that we had when we built, um, when we built it in the first place. Um, but, um, you know, I think, I was only saying something along, uh, well, I can't think of it, but, um, and I was saying, doesn't seem to be said at this point, I tied up. Uh, I do think that, um, in, uh, it's, uh, the lessons we learned last time is any lack of clarity is a detriment to the discussion. And with a short, uh, timeframe, clarity is what we need. And, um, so, uh, I also asked a clarifying question after the, the meeting that we had on Monday. I, um, asked at the meeting, um, about what triggers, um, the major amendment with public lands? And I heard something different in the meeting and got a different answer the following day after having a discussion with one of my colleagues. And I got a different answer from a thing that I thought I heard. And so, um, I, I had to look it up to, to give you the question and the answer, but it was along the lines of, um, what happens when you do projects on public lands? And, um, and the impact it has to the plan? And the answer substantially changes my point of view. So, um, yeah, I agree. And I think I made that point. Uh, an important point to this discussion, a really clarifying point to this discussion very well. Anybody else? Councilor Clark?
Yeah, um, we, uh, previously, um, some time ago, uh, you know, discussed and, um, and, uh, a motion was made to explore the possibility of affordable housing in that uppermost, uh, portion of Chuck Roberts and, um, also, uh, the, um, Public Works, Whackers Hollow, um, properties. Um, and regarding, uh, Chuck Roberts, I am still interested in exploring that possibility. I'm still interested in exploring that, that possibility of local patients. But as far, that, that doesn't mean that, um, that I think, uh, that Chuck Roberts necessarily needs to be in that plan. Um, so I am, I'm fine and, and I think it is wise to leave it out of the boundary. Um, and, but that is, uh, not at the Cato lack of, uh, interest in pursuing that notion, um, and, and, you know, exploring if there's a higher, better use for the community for part of that, uh, property.
Anybody else?
I, I do have a clarifying question because I, uh, you said what I left out, which is this, the idea of not having it in the urban renewal boundaries and, and still having that land available to us, it's not mutually exclusive. And, um, so, um, that isn't the view of the staff at this point either, is it?
No, I recognize that the council is still interested in looking at the potential for affordable housing in that upper piece. Yeah.
Council Penamara?
Yeah, um, just kind of continuing on in that thread. Um, regarding the, uh, uh, Public Works, uh, Whackers Hollow, um, parcel, um, there are parcels, there are two parcels there, total, uh, uh, 8.4 acres combined. Um, and I know that, you know, FEMA reviewed that site for a, a possible, um, emergency housing and, and chose not to, but I never, uh, I never have seen the report that they produced. I don't know how detailed it was. I don't know, um, you know, what the, what the extent of their exploration was. Um, and so while I recognize a certain, a certain portion of that area that's built, um, and, and unstable, that there's, you know, potentially a significant portion that is not, is usable. Um, as far as, you know, so I considered that, that was also in the last draft of the urban renewal boundary. And, um, in considering that parcel potentially being in this, it was, uh, it was in the Burns car and, um, and it is a location that, um, may have the potential to, uh, pose significant affordable housing, which is, um, you know, core of this, uh, plan. And I would, um, be curious to hear from my colleagues about, um, you know, the thoughts on the possibility of, uh, adding that back in. We have, uh, we're not, we're not up against our 20, uh, 25% ceiling threshold. We have some space, um, there. And, and also I just throw out that, you know, using that portion of that space is not implied relocating, uh, the Public Works Department. There's quite a bit of land, um, in addition to, uh, you know, what they use and occupy with their work there. So, um, this, um, curious to hear if anyone else has any other thoughts on that.
Anybody else? Council Penamara?
Um, I'd like to get a little sound field on that. I'd also like to know whether, who have ever seen that before? The, trying to keep on that side of, you know.
Can I ask for you to expand on that question? Not, not whether, I'm not just what she just asked, but also, um, the FEMA threshold for placing trailers is a set of criteria that, um, for emergency transitional housing. That's a really high threshold for the land that they choose. And, and what was your, uh, did you have an assessment or an opinion about the difference between what they said about that land as appropriate for transitional housing and prepping it for that? And, and then ultimately, um, whether or not there's an opinion about closer to what she's asking? Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, and I will not make a quick answer to detail anything, um, your question is asking. What I can share with this analysis was done before my time. Um, in my follow-up, when I did the draft, the budget request report, um, I said, they don't have a report to share. But they secured me an email that we chose not to place emergency housing there because of the instability due to the bill. Um, beyond that, they don't have a data, they're not going to share their actual assessment report, um, or their policy. They don't tend to share those reports. And I asked for a similar report for our, by the free area, but it was on a different screen. I will share, you know, given now comes a Penamara's question. To be able to build housing on that current location of the works, on the piece of property over there, we're going to need to do road upgrades to winter stage, um, which is currently already in the plan to make those road upgrades to make that area more accessible. And I, you know, I have not done any analysis around how much the housing could fit with Public Works data. I will say that my immediate concern would be around A, the safety of having housing close to Public Works, recognizing that they have storage of propane, storage of large debris piles, et cetera. We won't make sure we haven't the risk for folks being from a certain distance. My recommendation to council is recognizing that the first barrier to using that in housing is to get that road upgraded. When that road is upgraded, I would recommend council would consider that an immediate renewal. If the analysis showed that Public Works property is useful to move forward and create housing on. As a, as a step along way, I think it will probably take us several years to establish that road. My second concern is it might be best to get Public Works out of there or put housing in there. If anything might have gotten through, you know, it's not the case. But to use urban renewal funds to relocate Public Works would require getting a Google or three or four. Yeah, so having included that, so council one said you think that not including L does not exclusively mean including L.
Councilor Nara, and then Councilor Carr?
Yeah, just to put some of the, it's not too big to be, it's less than 2%.
I think with a pen and council size to keep Chuck Roberts up.
I mean, yeah, I think, I think there's, I think it sounds like there's consensus to keep Chuck Roberts up. And even, even so, there is a 2% limit of what we need to change. Speaking of minor amendments, I don't know.
1%.
1%.
So if we wanted to add it down the line, it would be an existing condition.
Okay, that, that was the third day I was thinking before. So I, I thought I heard that we could just add it in down, you know, to your town if we wanted to.
Through the amendment process?
Through the amendment process, but it would be a major amendment process. Yes, of this size.
Yeah.
Councilor Carr?
Yeah, given that we're talking about an area that is likely more than 1% of our proposed urban renewal area, what, what would be the liabilities of including in that? I mean, it doesn't affect the tax base. It's within the fire scar. It may, it may have the potential to help us accomplish our goals or we may learn something that, you know, which we realize that it doesn't. But any liabilities? I mean, it seems to be a bit pretty tight because then it's Burn Scar. Got a chance to post, you know, potentially based on what, what we know, which is not much about the geotechnical issues may have a potential to post significant affordable housing. Any liabilities hanging in there?
Um, my only thought to go along with what Councilor Byers mentioned earlier is this is a plan that, you know, public will need to approve. And so as long as we can be clear on messaging and, and that area. I, it's no reason why I'm not.
Can I ask a lay-in question? Yeah. Elaine, can we use urban renewal funds to do the analysis of that property?
If it's within, if it's within the area. Only if it's within the area.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, Councilor Carr?
That just, that sounds like another reason to include it. We need to know, we need to know where it's unstable and where it's not. That's, you know, that's the first question we can answer in regards to those parcels and what their potential is.
Thank you, Councilor Carr. Councilor Nara, could I see your hand go up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a chance to pull Public Works, pull staff to see if they have any feelings or worry either about, you know, what's still in the potential. I have a.
Are there any other questions on any of the boundary? We're still just talking about the whole boundary. Councilor Perry Miller?
Um, I think at this point, I would feel comfortable having in, as Councilor Quirk said, Mark Chrisama, Public Works, Public Works area, and also speaking of Chuck Roberts.
Okay, I would look for a consensus on the boundary here in just a moment. If, if there's some more questions. And then after questions, I'll take the speaker request forms and then we'll, we'll head towards giving discussion guidance.
And, you know, I am pulling up those properties right now so I know exactly what we're talking about. So I don't inadvertently listen to them.
While you're doing that, I'm going to go ahead and bring Derek Goldberg forward. Please state your, please state your name and your city for the record.
Hey, thanks. Derek Goldberg. Just a bit outside the town still in the upper row. Paying taxes on property and hill. Thank you all for being here. Mary Solstice, happy darkness to you. So I really appreciate the discussion tonight. And I've often, I keep saying, actually, I've said it often, I keep saying that I think the best effort for what the critical effort for affordable housing in town is, is all, all hands on deck, all shoulders to the wheel in order to make it happen. Gateway would be great for affordable housing and it's great that the city would consider pulling out all stops to find city property to contribute as well. I know the planning commission really did its head scratching and came to the conclusion like, hey, before we, before we start allowing residential buildability in all of our commercial zones, let's, why don't we create an incentive program to come up with incentivize affordable housing through that process? And that's a kind of vision I think that will really help talent maybe get back to that zero. We'll see. Talent's gentrifying quickly or maybe gentrified at any given perspective. So I want to thank you all for pulling out all the stops and putting your shoulders to the wheel. Love the idea of that Public Works property being back in. I acknowledge the controversy with Chuck Roberts, with the Little League fields and the temporary emergency housing. That's what the controversy was over. Glad to hear that clear by Monday meeting. But I guess I would just look for a commitment, given the sort of disappointing news with the taxes tonight, that that would actually redouble that effort by everyone here who's committed to affordable housing, excuse me, to figure out what more we can do. Because it's really sent a strong message watching tonight's presentation. It's really going to take every effort possible out there to really, to really come up with solutions for affordability in town. And I, I hope that you guys continue to work hard and do it. And I certainly see all the hard work you did do. It's hard to keep up with you guys underneath. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Are there any other speakers that want to, that have? Charlie, you can go ahead and fill out speaker's request form and I will take it. But typically speaker request forms should be filled out before the meeting. You have anybody online? Sorry, Charlie, you can go ahead and come up and just give it to her after if you rather. I apologize.
Well, and I apologize. I didn't know I was going to have the comments until I heard the excellent discussion. So it sort of spurred looking at the map, which is now purple. Oh, it's, it's not green, but looking at the green we gathered a little while ago. It is roughly congruent with what at least in my head, I think it was the Burn Scar, but not exactly congruent. And this discussion kind of reveals some of those differences. To your point earlier there about good communication, I think it'll be really important for public and maybe other parties to understand the differences between the Burn Scar and whatever proposed boundary y'all choose. Why is this piece in it that was not burned? And why is that part there that was burned but not in it? Those questions should be crystal clear when this communication is out. And that's all I wanted to suggest. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? And I do think it's, it just, just because it was brought up, it was part of a discussion the other night that I think we can draw from about how some of these other areas that aren't in the Burn Scar impact our ability to either recover from some of the loss in the Burn Scar or to access some of the, some of the work that needs to be done in the Burn Stars. I think some of those discussions are starting to go down already. All right, go, Jordan?
Mayor Queen, who's the next phase? Just to quickly clarify, make sure I'm following. Do you have a look at this piece of property, which is on the street behind you and as we consume? There's a 3.23 acres owned by the county. So you have town for me, and this is also a joint deed, so 5.5 acres. You don't have a benefit application, right? Great. And if my quick mind was correct, if we remove Chuck Roberts and add these two pieces, it would be at 195 acres, which would keep us below the maximum acreage.
Which is 212, right?
Isn't it 212?
Yeah, so that's a good margin left to work with. Okay, so we have talked about two, two adjustments since Monday. Removing Chuck Roberts and adding two, two parcels, I think, here Whackers Hollow. Are there any others before I look for a consensus? And a consensus, what you're voting for, right?
Yeah, we will, we will base our final analysis based on whatever values next.
Yeah, and then if I understand correctly, the next step then would be to adopt, to adopt the work that you've done in order to take it. You, you'll want to vote on the next decision.
I would, we would vote openly we'd be voting on a decision in draft plan.
Okay. Thank you for that, Charlie. Yeah. Okay, so we've made two potential adjustments. Are there any other potential adjustments that we would want to include in the final discussion tonight? Okay, you know, I did have one quick question. It's a little bit off topic and then, but I just remembered I was thinking about it because I was going through the packet earlier. The work on the goal for the work on the Rad Railroad crossing. That, is that work subject to, subject to railroad participation? And would it be, is it only for that railroad crossing, just the Rad Road railroad crossing? Okay. All right, so starting with you, Perry Miller, you want to reiterate your support for?
Yes, I feel comfortable with having in the Whackers Hollow property as well as Public Works and removing Chuck Roberts.
Councilor Byers?
Yes, I agree with both of you to add Chuck Roberts and remove Chuck Roberts.
Thank you. Councilor Ryder?
Agreed.
Councilor Nara?
Agreed.
Councilor Carr?
Agreed. All right.
Thank you for a great presentation. Do you need anything else from us on this topic?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the poet for your great input. Very useful. Item number 10.1 is Discussion of Traffic and Transportation Committee's Staff Report.
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we discussed going back, as you say, rebuilding the public safety and transportation committee that had been heightened since COVID lockdown again a couple of months ago. I was wanting to consult his review, but structure for transportation and safety committee, public safety for transportation committee, remind all of us and those of us already, refresh what the structure is and what it poses. To see a minute from us from council, I think you'd like to see change before we start moving forward with that committee.
Has everybody had a chance to review this item?
Question. Councilor Ryder? Because I wasn't here when it existed. Are there or were there members at that time that it helped because of COVID that are interested in moving? Or?
I think I have to refer to later on that question. Um, not that I'm aware of. I, I mean, from the community's standpoint.
Yeah. So it would just be recording new.
I had one comment. I was surprised, first of all, when I read this. I was surprised by how comprehensive it's, it's. And it was good stuff in my mind. I did feel like at some point in time, it would be interesting to bring this back around and talk a little bit about some of the, and I don't even honestly know if this would fit, but some of the discussions we had about, we've had about creating walkability, walkable downtown and whether or not developing some policy around that would impact the work that this commission would do. And just at some point in time, queuing, queuing this in the year or maybe even, maybe even assigning that work to the commission themselves. But I do think that there's room for, and this is pretty, pretty policy wonky. And I do think there's some room for a little more value, value added. Councilor Nara?
Yeah, I have the same thought. I mean, I, I think that the idea of, you know, safety and getting orderly with, you know, police, public works, planning and all of that is, is exactly the group need to say, should we put a stop sign on the street or, you know, traffic congestion and that sort of thing? But if, if I recall, I'm trying to remember, I wasn't here at the time, but for the transportation system plan. That was a, that, many of the same people, it was much broader as I recall. That's something that needs to be done that seems to be bigger than the scope of this community and order. To Mayor's point, there's so many opportunities for, for, for grants, say grants to school, to explore ways to, to buy quality, walkability and, and that very metro lanes to safety, I think, in our town. So, so, well, that was my thought process. I feel like this committee is absolutely essential to bring back. And I imagine that staffs are already doing this work, just not meeting it in front of the committee. So, but it would be great to get it back to make the community involved. Question is, could you create a subcommittee that's really like more than just a subcommittee of this committee? That would have a lot of community members that would say, do walk audits or, you know, walkability in the other town. Those kinds of community survey projects, come up with recommendations that might end up in transportation system plan. Is that something that could be part of, like, maybe the offices of this committee? Or does it really belong in another committee? And that's, and that's kind of what I've been thinking about. Maybe perhaps even under the plan. Maybe perhaps even under the planning commission, you know, might be an appropriate place to do that work. But that's something I think we can think about. But regardless, I think it'd be great to bring this committee back to this.
Can I just add to that point? One of the things that occurred to me as I was reading this is this, this commission functions like the planning commission in that they are, they're provided with a challenge to solve, a puzzle to solve, and they, they go to the policies to solve it. And where they go to the criteria, what looks like criteria anyway, without a little tighter review, but a lot of it looks like planning criteria. So I agree with, with exactly what you just said. But I do, I do see, again, I see some of, some of those additional maybe policies being worked out through this committee and commission. So if there's, and, and because the planning director or the community director is assigned to this, which brings me, will bring me to my next question. But I do see that there is a direct correlation between the work of both commissions and that he almost always on through that position. So not to negate what you're saying, but, but just if I relate to what you're saying, actually, is what I'm trying to say. In that the work is still similar and they are a decided body. We're assigned, we have already assigned that authority by way of this ordinance. My next question is, the staff that is assigned to this, this is a staff, do you have any question? And so is the staff on board with, do they have the capacity to engage?
They do. Staff can request that either the committee meets as issues arise or court. I do think we switch it to a monthly. Staff committee, that would extract capacity. Right? We may say that court may adjust fine or even as issues come up, they can continue as well.
And then my other question was, this very specifically asks for the chief and community development director where it asks for a representative of public works. Is there, from a staff perspective, would it be helpful to amend that to be represented by each department? And if it, if it turns out the chief wants to be that representative or the community development director wants to be that representative, they can be?
I think that would be a great amendment with the ordinance. Yeah, we have the staff members who are in the chief's position and the director's role for direct transportation. This would be a great way to get them involved.
Any other questions? Counselor Perry Miller?
I have a question about making both the committee out of the commission. I was wondering if you all thought it might be good to align it with our other committees and commissions as far as where folks have to live in order to participate? Really just for consistency sake, so that we're not trying to remember what the rules are for each committee and commission. This one is related to remembering the boundary. And I think that most of our efforts are that members may live outside of that. But I can't remember the exact language, so that was outside of city limits?
Well, that's up to all members. I think it's like one.
One, yeah.
One or two possibly? Anyways, that was something that might be worth it. But they're going to amend anyways. Yeah, I think that's prudent. Especially, I mean, in light of the fact that those, those residency rules are just about, I mean, my understanding is that they're most about, you know, these are actual stakeholders, taxpayers, that, you know, that contribute to the well-being of our community through, through property tax. And so it does make sense to me that we would align that residency piece with the other committees and commissions. And I think that we would just have one outlier. I'm not, I can't remember which one it is, but. So would you want to prepare those and bring them to another meeting?
Yes.
Is there any other suggestions? Because I'm sorry, I'm gonna middle this thing a little bit. Counselor Panama?
We have the same, we're sort of. Yeah, so I think this is great to bring this back. But as the mayor said, I have been thinking too. You know, if we wanted to remash any of the people that would meet them, the most of the community members and do a lot of walk audits and things like that. That's not really this group. But my, my question kind of remains is whether that could be a committee of another standing committee? And if so, what, you know, would it take an act of counsel to, to make that happen? Or could perhaps parks say, hey, you can stand up as a subcommittee and invite other people to participate in walkout? See where we're in these landmarks or something like that? Is it that possible or does council need to be involved?
So that's my knowledge. If I'm right off the air, this might double check her. All committees and commissions have the ability to form their own subcommittees without council approval?
As long as those subcommittees just make recommendations to the respective committee or commission.
And then can the subcommittees actually include more folks than in the original committee? Can any more add up?
Lots of folks. Great. Counselor Clark?
Wasn't the, I'm thinking back to the Clean Energy Action Plan. And I believe they did some work, they were, oh, it's all a work group. That, because they were included, included people from Together for Talent, I believe. That was significantly involved, is my understanding. And included other, other community members too. So this is a, a work group, you know, doing research and preparing a recommendation to the Together for Talent committee and test that to the council. Go ahead with that.
Yeah, that rings a bell. We got one on the public meetings notification side. So, you know, definitely as liaison, I want to work with our committees and our commissions about keeping that tight and that there was a lot of, you know, I, I'm guessing there was a little bit of ungluey that's going on there. But we can, we can rein it in. Those Together for Talent, those, those leaf cleaning.
She's affectionate.
Yes. Anything else?
And as next step, we'll, the staff will prepare some next amendments to bring the whole into all the ordinance.
Great. All right, I just want to let everybody know that it's nine seventeen, we'll need an amendment to extend. I would prefer to make that, that decision now before we jump into the next item. Counselor Panama?
I'm going to be staying in the meeting as long as necessary to finish your council business.
We have a motion, then a setting for a standing meeting. As long as that's, it's very complete council business. I think we are not at the ten o'clock, am I?
I guess not.
I'm just clarifying. And then, and a second. Any discretion? Also, favorably say name, I mean, I. Any opposed? It's been a long time since I've done, you know, we've been roll calling over Zoom for so long. And our, our rules really only require our roll call for resource heavy decisions. And I think it's more specific than that. Land use, I think it is. It'd be interesting to, it'd be interesting for us to back review that. Because I'll get used to doing this and then I won't get a roll call when we need one. So, which was the problem we had before. All right, so the next item on the agenda is not ten point two. And it's the Discussion of the City Manager's Salary Staff Report.
So there, I'm gonna, our procedure will be decided in the next two items. It is about salary that I was given to public officers. I'm going to say that. But I will be, be attached at the bottom for just outside of the table.
Do you have one place to go? The offices, will they open the office? That'll be wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Trying to connect with questions while you're still here. In case you prepared the agenda or the packet. I was trying to wrap my mind up. So there's two agenda. I like rate ten point two and ten point three. And then in the packet, there's three pages. And the last page is like further discussion. I'm just seeing three motions. Does anyone else have that? Like the last three pages? Until I was confused a little bit if the third to last page and the very last page are the same conversation.
Yes, I apologize. That third, that last page should have been.
Okay.
The, the new report based on.
Okay, thank you.
Apologies.
No, no, thank you. Also, when everyone thought of reviewing, it's gonna take ten minutes.
I may have gotten that I'm back right now.
So it's like we're taking a short break. I think she's going to be there. Five, five minutes, what?
Let's not waste five minutes. I want to go. I mean, you know, so until everyone remembers.
Okay, until everyone.
Until everyone remembers.
All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. And you completed your performance review for Jordan. Now for the council review. Adjust her salary. Her employment contract is signed July twenty first, twenty twenty one. And it included in it a specific number for salary, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. My understanding of that is based informally on a salary range that was prepared by the HR specialists for Raff and Co. And that range was a hundred and four thousand seven point six up to almost a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So the council chose the hundred and eight thousand dollars. It's kind of, it's a little less than twenty percent of the, the difference between the high and low in that salary range. The contract also provided for a constant living adjustment floor of one percent, ceiling of four percent. And her salary was adjusted in July of this year as prescribed in the, in the year. And four percent increase, which brought her current salary up to a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. So now the question is a performance based adjustment, separate and apart from that COLA based adjustment. And with respect to that performance based adjustment, the council is not constrained by that twenty twenty one salary range or my COLA, ceiling and floor. It can be just based on your evaluation performance. The, if you look at this second page, there's a table there that the little scenario one incorporates that initial salary range for twenty twenty one down into five quintiles. And quintiles is just, just because the first time you chose to place or in the first quintile, I decided to use quintiles just as a way of looking at what you want to do. With the scenario two is, is based on taking that initial salary range and adjusting it by four percent because we discussed in the contract, a four percent ceiling on COLA. Again, you're not constrained by that COLA number when you're making this salary adjustment. So it also included scenario, scenario number three, which assumes a six percent adjustment to that original salary range. And it chose six percent simply because that's the number that came out of the most recent labor negotiations and is, which was then reflected in all the other C U managers' salary increases of six percent. So the council has full discretion to ignore these scenarios. They're just intended to give you a decision framework. And I think with that, I'm open to questions.
Counselor Wyers?
Yes, Dave. I'm curious though, if we gave Jordan's reassessment of her salary in July was a one-time assessment. Please remind me that we agreed on after an initial period of the city manager? Or if we can add ongoing adjustments as of January and July every year?
According to the contract, every July first, there is a COLA adjustment.
And every January first, we would be looking at a potential adjustment based on performance review?
The performance review is totally up to you, both in terms of map and in terms of time.
Thank you. I have some comments on that, not so much a question. Is that performance review is, is due on August first, I believe. We had trouble this year aligning Raff and Co. To get it done on time. That's corrected. They're gonna start in June in twenty twenty-three. But with that said, we also have the flexibility to make her adjustment retroactive, which is what I would support. So we take it back to, you know, normally, I mean, it's common to do salary adjustments, certainly historically common with city and county salary adjustments at the time of all, to consider salary adjustments at the time of all of the assessments. So, you know, it wouldn't be out of precedence here. Counselor Panama?
Yes, Mayor, so, so what you're saying is to, to Counselor Ryer's question, we, we can look to getting raises every year.
We can, yeah, the answer is that we, we have the flexibility, correct me if I'm wrong, to consider a salary adjustment anytime of the year, at any time. But historically, we've done that at the time of assessment. Or we.
Right, assessment tied for this at the contract. But it's pretty quick. That doesn't dictate when the salary adjustment could be made.
I want to weigh in. So I think what I would support is moving her salary adjustment to skipping the next step. So she's in the first quintile now? Or it's in the second, she's in the second quintile?
Well, with the COLA adjustment, move her up to a hundred and twelve thousand plus, it puts her in, still in the first quintile if you're using scenario three. And even in the first quintile, they're using scenario four.
Yeah.
So however you look at it, she's in the first quintile or not?
Yeah, I don't see, given the, given the, you know, just the outcomes of her assessment, I don't see moving her to the next quintile. I see a skipping of quintile two. And one of the things that I have long valued is at some point in time, I can't remember how long ago it was, but we made it, we made a policy that treated the department heads with the same type of COLA adjustments and that were impacting, don't quote me on this, but I very closely know, that impacted the employees during the negotiation. So the department heads enjoys a lot of the same benefits. And I just don't think that the city manager is an exception to that. So I, I, my personal. So I, I, my personal, um, as one member of this team is to take her. I don't see, um, it being a good idea to cap her out, but I definitely see, um, her performance, um, being such a level that we, we move her to a higher quintile in the next step, which I really appreciate that you, you laid this out today. Um, and then, uh, I would support the 6% COLA increase to that. Based on what we did for, um, the entire staff and based on, you know, what is it? 8% um, increase in cost, which is why we did the 6% in the first place, so. Um, that, those are my thoughts.
Counselor. Counselor Byers?
Just, you know, I'm doing this research for the legalization that I run in social security, it's in 8% of COLA.
Yeah.
So to me, sticking with 4% is, you know.
Yeah, I do want to comment that we did some other, we did some other benefit adjustments that were.
When you're lunch, no, I just moved here. Uh, could you say that again, 1%?
8%.
Thanks.
Counselor Perry Miller?
I have a really ignorant question, Dave, what is a quintile?
Oh, it's just, uh, 20% segments, a fifth of 100%.
I guess I'm just struggling. I understand the scenarios, I guess I don't understand how Jordan fits into the first, second, third, fourth, fifth quintile. Is this, am I the little struggling?
I have to look it up, just so you know. Yeah, I have the benefit of having this conversation earlier with y'all, but yeah.
No, I. David?
Well, I was just going to say, it makes sense to me to look at her salary and see which range of numbers it falls into. So it's just a way to create a spread of chunks. It's an R1 based on, as Dave said, sorry, no COLA, so it's just, it's just separating now that the ranges are equal.
Okay.
So if you were looking at it as a factor, it would be chunk, 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 five chunks, all the same with, to make this better.
I guess I'm just struggling because we've already bumped her up to the 4%, correct?
Yeah, so she's.
So why is scenario one even included in this?
Just to show you where you started from.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just follow up with Dave, Dave, so the, and the numbers, the scenario one numbers was the range that you got from HR.
That's right.
And then it's increased four and increased six.
Correct, maybe to kind of follow up on your explanation, which I agree with. In scenario one, basically what the council did was look at the difference between the very first number in the first, uh, row or column and the very last number in that, uh, column. So you're looking at a range between 104,000 and 121,000. Similarly, and then they just break that down into five chunks. So you can, it just gives you a way to think about it. Again, you can ignore those chunks if you want and just say, I think it ought to be some, you know, ought to be X. Similarly, in, for example, scenario three, if you just took the original 104,000 and added 6% to it, you'd get 110,951. And now looking at the very bottom of that column, the last number, moved up by 6% would be 129,203. So if you decide you want to go with the 6%, then you could just look at any number between 110,000 and 129,000 and say, I think that's the right number. You can then also look at any quintile and say, well, you know, I can, I can see that that puts her in the second 20% or the third 20% chunk, just to get a sense of, of what, you know, what the last numbers are.
Thank you, Dave.
I have a little more time with this, can, can I just tell you all that I, what I ended up thinking about it? Um, and again, this is just if, if I were making decisions of how I would approach it, but. So she currently is in the second, um, scenario one, second tier. Um, and I like this tier, uh, the way this is broken down, and I hope that it sets, you know, it sets, uh, it sets the table for future discussions. I feel like it's a really great way to look at this. So, uh, that's where she is currently. She moved, um, to the second scenario with that 4%.
Uh, actually, if I can have the numbers on the front page, she's still in the first quintile because she's at 112,000.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm about to, I had to explain that. So, so she, her salary was 108,000, she moved into the second, um, scenario, uh, with the 4% increase, which happened automatically. We have an opportunity to move her to a different quintile based on her performance. And, and we also can choose to take her to the 6%, which, which doesn't add on to her 4% other than the additional 2%, if that makes sense. So, um, it's just increasing what automatically happened by 2% and we choose the 6%. And, and I, I struggled with that for a minute when I first saw this thing. It's like, well, does that four plus six add up to 10? No, it just would take her to the next and add an additional 2%. So, um, I don't know if you guys struggled with that at all, um, but I just thought I'd, I'd tell you what my thinking was when I, when I, when I was first looking at this.
Counsel, uh, Counsel Byers?
I, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate because it might just relate to things wrong. But I, this, I was having a hard time with this, um, based on the next agenda item. Because I was aware, um, a lot of what I was reading in there, and that's my fault for not looking into that further. But, um, so I'm, I'm really interested in, um, in the next item as well, but, um, and so I don't know if it's okay to just ask a quick, a quick question um, about that.
About the next agenda?
I, yeah, it's, to me, like, I'm having, I, I realize that they're separated, but, um, just as far as Jordan's compensation, I have a hard time separating them. So, um, I'm reading, so, you know, in the, in the TURA compensation, it's, this is, that discussion will be, um, talking about between June 15th and November 30th. What, what is the TURA situation beyond that and any compensation for Jordan, um, after November TURA?
Maybe the IGA with TURA works. Jordan, uh, is to be, what, Jordan, the city is to be, um, to receive from TURA 15% of her salary. Annualized, uh, that is per month. And by the way, 5% for the city quarter, 5% for the finance district as well. It's a percentage, um, it's not a set number. I think it's fair to say that, um, Jordan has been spending her 400% of her city manager time on city business and more than 50% of her time on TURA business. And not getting any compensation for that additional.
Which was really hard to read, but, so I'm glad that we're, it's gonna be that. But so then, so after November, so we're just talking, in the next conversation, we're just talking about sort of that giving that. But from November forward, it would be that percentage that she would be getting that.
It depends on what you want to do. You could make it retroactive, which is really what this, I mean, it's kind of proposing, uh, but you can do whatever you want if you have the discretion to do that. And because there may be changes in the future in terms of how much time she spends. Um, for instance, if somebody were hired to handle more of the TURA business, uh, then should her time would go down? I would be suggesting that for the future, we amend that IGA with TURA to have, and reflect, out actual hours rather than arbitrary percentages it does now. And probably the same for the, you know, city quarter and the, uh, the finance district.
And you need to. I was having a really hard time with that one.
Yeah, I, I do, uh, I do think that, um, the TURA piece is a different context. And, um, and I appreciate why you needed to ask that question and I, and we're fine with it. But, um, what I would say is, uh, let's focus on, um, making her salary right and then focus on, um, making her, uh, TURA compensation right. And, um, the piece I, I definitely, uh, what, what is set out of context is, um, is around, and I'm sensitive about this. And, and I think we all should be, is around, um, uh, the compensation, um, and whether or not at the time, uh, that the report says that at the time that this happened, uh, Jordan wasn't expecting to exceed the hours. Um, but that changed and that's why we will be considering an additional amount. So, um, it, it isn't, uh, it isn't as much of a, like, um, neglect thing as it is. Just, just the way it played out. Yeah. Um, if we, Jordan and I actually had a conversation about this.
What's that?
Yeah. Is it getting warm in here? Does everybody else okay for heat? All right, so let's get back to, um, thank you. And again, I want to say, Counsel Byers, I appreciate why you needed to ask that question, like I heard what we were asking.
Uh, Counselor Penom, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, I'm wondering where, um, because you've given this thought, and I'm going as far as moving up, uh, a couple, one or two quintiles. I'm just wondering if you can just throw out another.
I see if it were by decision, I see moving her to the fourth quintile and taking her to 6%. Um, I. Well, I see her at the 121,903.
I would recommend doing it around 122.
Yeah. Good, good call. I'm sorry.
I, I was literally with all of that, and my, my reasons would be to get around 122 instead of 121,903.
Yeah, we have another review coming before her next, um, uh, before her next, um, negotiation. Um, because she has a three-year contract. So that does leave us still room for, um, incentivizing her ongoing rate performance, um, which I have no doubt we can expect. But that said, it's also a point to recognize that we are not constrained by, by this top number either, so.
Counselor Penom, do you have a question?
No, I'm ready for motion, Counsel Byers.
Oh, Counsel Byers, your motion too, yeah.
Let's do it.
Um, I think that city manager Brooklyn's annualized salary for service as administrator head of the city account is set at 122,000 starting January 1st, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjust city manager Jordan Brooklyn's salary to 122, uh, 122,000. Is there any further discussion? Um, I'm sorry, let me, let me restate that. We have a motion in a second, uh, that city manager Brooklyn's annualized salary for service as administrator head of the city account is set at 122,000 starting January 1, 2023. I would support this if there was an amendment to make it retroactive. To 2022, August 1. And I'm so, I'm sorry, uh, that was out of order for me to say that, um, my apologies. I, I, you have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? That was some credibly influencing, I just did there. My apologies.
Uh, Counsel Perry Miller?
What a day to stretch the line.
Uh, Counsel Byers?
I would be able to amend my motion in a second, every case.
I do.
And I would amend my motion to say that I move that city manager Brooklyn's annualized salary for service as administrator head of the city account is set at 122,000 starting retroactively as of August 1st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, uh, that city manager Brooklyn's annualized salary for service as administrator head of the city account is set at 122,000 starting August 1st. Any discussion? 2022, thank you. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Counselor Penom?
Yes.
Counselor Penom?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Penom?
Yes.
For you, Karen.
Thank you. Um, Dave, I'm fairly certain that it's only one, um, but if it's different, will you let us know?
I'm sorry, say anything.
I said, I'm fairly certain that the review date is only one, but if it's different, will you please let us know?
I believe you're right.
Okay. You'll check that for me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, counsel. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is item number 10.10.3, discussion, uh, of past repay from TURA for Jordan Brooklyn's TURA work as executive director.
Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. We've pretty much discussed this, uh, the, the substance of this already. She has been serving as the executive director for TURA in an active position, uh, since, um, the 8th of June of this year. And as we discussed, uh, the IGA has been, as a result of the IGA, uh, TURA has been invoiced 50% of her salary. Or, I mean, those are, that's her total compensation. And, um, and has paid that into the city. Uh, the city has not passed that through, uh, to her. So the question is, do you want to conduct that? And again, uh, I'm thinking going forward, we probably want to try to amend that, um, that intergovernmental agreement with TURA to take out the 50% of the referral and hour number. That's something the council can consider, right? This doesn't compose that change. This simply says, whatever, this proposed motion there is, simply says, whatever TURA pays into the city for her portion that is invoiced, uh, that the city gives to them, uh, will be formally passed through to, to Jordan.
Counsel Byers? And then Counsel, uh, Penom?
I'm wondering if we need to include if any motion in this declaration for data payment, if it needs, if it should be paid as a non-salable by a, uh, over the date to summer 1st, 2022? Or if we are simply leaving any further details for any sort of even outside of just the payment that was the issue. I'm wondering if there are instructions in there.
I couldn't fully hear everything, but I think you were asking whether we want to tie any of this.
Yes.
You could, uh, I cannot discuss that, uh, prospect with, uh, with Jordan. I haven't discussed very much of this with Jordan, by the way, but if you're out, this is one possible. But, uh, I think you're asking about the tax and consequences for her, is what I'm thinking.
No, I'm asking more about the instruction and, um, process. I, I realize we need, as a council, don't often give direction at that level, but in this case, I'm very much necessary because of, uh, the individual hire and the fact that there is a, uh, who told me this, they, uh. I'm just going to go along with it.
Can I weigh in as delegate, uh, in this process?
Well, you got a lot of information that I could, yes.
Um, I, that's an excellent point. Um, I think my, my process of thinking about this, uh, in, in discussions about, you know, a direction that we could, we could set our sights on um, to compensate adequately for the additional work that she's done, was that she started this on June 8th and, um, and we can reasonably expect that she'll continue through to the end of the year at the pace that she's at. we could reasonably expect that she'll continue through to the end of the year at the pace that she's at. Chances are it will continue beyond that, but at some point in time, she's made it clear that she's going to change, uh, and, uh, her, um, change her role a little bit to make it more sustainable for herself, which is what we all fully support. Um, so while we have a fixed amount behind us and reasonably up until December thirty-first, a clearly fixed amount, um, based on what she's already done, we see a variable amount before us. And, uh, that, that speaks to Dave Lomond's point about, uh, looking at an amendment at some point.
Does that vary, does that amount, that fixed amount change if we retroactively increase her salary?
I don't think it does. Um, I see, oh, I see what you're saying, it's the fifteen percent of the salary thing. I think what this proposal was suggesting is what has, uh, passing through what the city has already received.
Yes.
And, and I think what you're saying is that we want to consider more based on the adjustment as of August first.
I'm just wondering what, what precedence of setting financial compensation happens because of this sort of wonderful moment we created with the retroactive salary increase.
Yeah, that's a really great point.
If I may, uh, the, the motion, the structure of somebody basically ignores the fact that she made her, her salary retroactive, who just says whatever Tura has paid to you so far and will pay in the rest of this month, um, will be paid to her. And, and actually in the future as well, although in the future, hopefully, that will be adjusted according to our, uh, payment system.
Councilor Penar?
Um, there's something that really bothers me about this. Um, she did do, like you said, one hundred and fifteen percent over forty hours a week. We're, we're playing crazy because she has this additional, additional task. And to, to pay her directly, that one is some of the work that she did, I think is just unfair. But to say from now on, you're going to be paying your hundred percent new salary plus another chunk is essentially, sounds like it's telling her that she's supposed to work, um, more than a hundred percent of the city manager. And I, I have problems with that.
Yeah, I don't think that's the intention. Uh, it's the, the date twenty twenty.
It's the future part and, and that's, and, and I, and I think that isn't the intention, but I feel like that's what we're spelling out here. And I, and I'm wondering whether, no, I'm wondering if it's legal.
I, I don't think it does. Okay, beg to differ. Great, great. What it says, I think what says it, sets the table for exactly the opposite, which, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it, it spells out that beginning January one, twenty twenty-three, the city's invoices to Tura will show the actual hours Ruplan spends each week on the tour matters. And that sets the table for us to be able to adjust the variable, um, the variable.
Sorry, I'm not, I, my motion is different. I was looking at the motion, so maybe I'm confused. But Councilor Breyer has heard and, uh, she
Um, let me finish this point. I think we, to your point, I think we can just, um, we can just add the date range, um, from her, her beginning date to the end of this year and, and satisfy that concern. And, and it's still, we still have room for further discussion based on the staff report, in my mind, but, um, Council, Councilor Breyer?
Two points, yeah. First one, going back to my line of inquiry, so Tura will not be retroactively invoiced for an additional amount if we are retroactively increasing Jordan's salary. Correct?
Correct, I believe, the way this motion is spread, yes.
Okay, and I absolutely agree with what you're saying and support that as, and I'm wondering if there is a means that council can build into Jane's job description as a way to advocate for a balance. So we are not, um, inevitably pushing towards, or not, because we all really value the resources that she brings into the day of her skills. So I'm wondering if there's a way to articulate that payment in a knowledge that as part of her role as city manager, she currently also is fulfilling duties as the Tura executive director in finding a way to acknowledge that the same hour to the day can be simultaneously spent in service at Tura and the City of Talent on the same tasks, essentially, as well as saving. Yes. And that she's being compensated with the additional level of responsibility that she's holding, not necessarily additional hours that she's working.
I agree, um, I, I want to respond to that. Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying and, um, and I think it makes sense. I think where I feel really comfortable about what we do next as of January one is that Jordan has proven time and time again that the best advocate for Jordan is Jordan. She is not afraid to say what she needs and she's not afraid to say how we can approach things. Um, she, um, in, in a recent meeting, made it clear that she was going to make some adjustments to make things more sustainable. I, I feel like, um, maybe what might be useful is to just convey to her that we trust when she figures that out, that she'll let us know, um, what that looks like and that we can make our amendments based on maybe a staff report from her about that. Um, I know that in my conversations, the very limited conversations that I've had with her about these adjustments, um, she's been really clear that, um, she's, she's wanted to, um, take this incrementally because she doesn't have a firm plan based on the fact that we don't have a firm plan about Tura and how it will look forward. Um, so I, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying, what you don't, um, what I, I, I just, I feel like I might have a little more information just because I've had those conversations with her and that, that I think that she'll, um, be very, very clear about what we need to do in terms of amending her. Uh, but to your point, I see building in a little extra time off for her at some point in time. And, um, uh, you know, as, as perhaps part of this offer. Um, and I would subject that offer to her, the grants on it, because she might not want the additional one at that time. Oh, yeah. Okay, we got one.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it sounds like if you're saying table this until Jordan comes out with this, with the submitment, combined with yours, I'm totally for that.
What I would actually say is not table or postpone this, but to approve it so we can write our check before the end of the year and get our part of this, but that we are open to further discussion when we go to the amendment.
If I could, I want to, I, up to, up to January first, I'm, I'm, I'm not
Up to December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say the same, uh, I'm supportive of, uh, including a date. It's specific date range so that we can evaluate.
Councilor Breyer? I'm supportive of that as well. I do really want to advocate for a written document that we can all refer to for expectations on the, however Jordan advocates for our presentation to us. I think we need to have that shared agreement of reference, but we can do that later.
I think that that is a very good point. I know, uh, I think it serves a lot of purposes, actually. Councilor Penar, ready for motion?
Yes. I know that Jordan Brooklyn received from the City of Talent this payment for her services to Tura. The entire amount the city has already received and will receive in the future from Tura for Jordan Brooklyn's work for Tura through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, oh, excuse me. Yes, we have a motion in a second that Jordan, uh, Brooklyn received from the City of Talent as payment for her services to Tura. The entire amount the city already has received and will receive in the future from Tura for Brooklyn's work for Tura through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Uh, Roll Call, please.
Councilor
Yes.
Councilor Penar?
Yes.
Councilor Breyer?
Yes.
Councilor Breyer?
Yes.
Councilor Penar?
Yes.
Motion, please, again.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and ask Jordan to come back in, uh, Hector. She's in, uh, the office. Thank you, Dave. You did an excellent job for us on this. We really appreciate, um, how you broke it up and how you, how you made sense of it all for us. Yeah, it made, it made the discussion go very well. I'm very grateful. All right, we're, uh, two minutes, we're about a minute from the ending of the meeting. I'm gonna, uh, while you race to the table here, Jordan. Um, uh, the next piece of the business, I do have a future agenda item. I would like, um, the council to reaffirm, um, the mayor and council president as delegates. We've been practicing that way and I just looked at our record and it goes back quite a few years. It goes back as far as two thousand seventeen, um, where their, uh, their delegates in the management of the city manager, uh, in the supervisory place with the city manager, um, with the city attorney. Um, and as it's practiced in the past, and we can go into this further if it comes back to the council as a reaffirming, affirming motion, um, uh, that, uh, that's a cycle that gets done, um, over salary, et cetera, um, as a means of bringing a recommendation to the council. So it's not a deciding amendment body, uh, but it's also not a committee commission. And I would ask us to be able to look into whether, whether city, uh, Kristi Monson's definition of delegates interferes with any of the meeting.
If you need to learn it.
Yeah, right. Uh, okay, so as a future, are there any other future agenda items? All right, great. Um, so will this meeting adjourned?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm still ready.
Jordan? Thank you.